Thanks for joining us tonight, everybody. Would you stand with me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, will you take the roll call, please?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Present.
Councilmember Angler.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Mayor Protam Adam.
Here.
Mayor McCoy.
Present. There is no request for continuance of any public hearing or agenda items, so I will head to the podium for a special presentation. Invite Elaine Hagan to come on up. She is a board member of the Canejo Open Space Foundation. Would you join me at the podium?
Hello.
Oh, thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
All right, let me read this, okay? It's pretty cool stuff. "Each year, the Canejo Open Space Foundation holds Trails Education Days, an outdoor education program for Canejo Valley 4th grade students, sponsored by the Canejo Open Space Trails Advisory Committee. This unique program includes a nature hike and workshops in Wildwood Park. After the field trips, the students are invited to enter a letter-writing contest, which is judged by a group of volunteers, including retired teachers. Two students from each participating school receive prizes for their letters, and five students, district-wide, are chosen as grand prize winners. And Elaine, you're going to tell us more about the Trail Education Days and introduce this year's winners, am I correct?"
Yes, that's right.
Take it over.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy and council members. This year, 1,101 CVUSD 4th graders attended Trails Education Days. The Students' Day begins with a one-hour nature hike through Wildwood Canyon, and the children are grouped with hike leaders, who are volunteers, many of whom have extensive experience in naturalist training and so forth. One of the hike leaders this year remembers her 5th-grade Trails Education Days field trip. Following the hike, the three workshops focused on ranger careers, indigenous birds and animals, presented by Animal Actors of Hollywood, and trail safety and courtesy. Around 75 volunteers, plus the COSCA ranger staff, make the program possible. You can find videos and further information at the foundation's website, cosf.org. The Canejo Open Space Foundation provides funding for the annual writing contest, which incorporates curriculum concepts and vocabulary suggested by CVUSD staff. This year, we received 880 letters, which is, if you do the math, it's 79.9 percent of the students submitted letters, which is a very high number."
That deserves applause.
Yeah. Volunteer Malaney Ashen, who is also a COSTAC member and a volunteer usher for the Civic Arts Plaza. Anyway, Malaney manages the contest and recruits the judges. The eight judges approach their task very carefully, and we greatly appreciate their time and effort. Now, I'm happy to introduce you to the five grand prize winners, and as I say your name, can you please come and stand behind me here? First is Angela Bass from Acacia, and her teacher is Joy Sweetley, who is in the audience. And next is Leah Muuger of Banyan, and her teacher is Michelle Eby.
Thanks for joining us tonight, everybody. Would you stand with me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, will you take the roll call, please?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Present.
Councilmember Engler?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protam Adam?
Here.
Mayor McCoy?
Present. There's no request for continuance of any public hearing or agenda items, so I will head to the podium for a special presentation. Invite Elaine Hagan to come on up. She's a board member of the Canejo Open Space Foundation. Would you join me at the podium?
Hello.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
All right, let me read this, okay?
Okay.
It's pretty cool stuff. Each year, the Canejo Open Space Foundation holds Trails Education Days, an outdoor education program for Canejo Valley 4th grade students, sponsored by the Canejo Open Space Trails Advisory Committee. This unique program includes a nature hike and workshops in Wildwood Park. After the field trips, the students are invited to enter a letter-writing contest, which is judged by a group of volunteers, including retired teachers. Two students from each participating school receive prizes for their letters, and five students district-wide are chosen as grand prize winners. And Elaine, you're going to tell us more about the Trail Education Days and introduce this year's winners, am I correct?
Yes, that's right.
Take it over.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy and council members. This year, 1,101 CVUSD 4th graders attended Trails Education Days. The Students' Day begins with a one-hour nature hike through Wildwood Canyon, and the children are grouped with hike leaders who are volunteers, many of whom have extensive experience in naturalist training and so forth. One of the hike leaders this year remembers her 5th grade Trails Education Days field trip. Following the hike, the three workshops focused on ranger careers, indigenous birds and animals, presented by Animal Actors of Hollywood, and trail safety and courtesy. Around 75 volunteers, plus the COSCA ranger staff, make the program possible. You can find videos and further information at the foundation's website, cosf.org. The Canejo Open Space Foundation provides funding for the annual writing contest, which incorporates curriculum concepts and vocabulary suggested by CVUSD staff. This year, we received 880 letters, which is, if you do the math, it's 79.9% of the students submitted letters, which is a very high number.
That deserves applause.
Yeah. Volunteer Malaney Ashen, who is also a COSCA member and a volunteer usher for the Civic Arts Plaza. Anyway, Malaney manages the contest and recruits the judges. The eight judges approach their task very carefully, and we greatly appreciate their time and effort. Now, I'm happy to introduce you to the five grand prize winners, and as I say your name, can you please come and stand behind me here? First is Angela Bass from Acacia, and her teacher is Joy Sweetley, who is in the audience. And next is Leah Muger of Banyon, and her teacher is Michelle Eby. Next is Isabella Steiner, also of Banyon, and her teacher is Kimberly Tetslav. Next is Otto Gassowski of Westlake Elementary, and his teacher is Rebecca Crowell.
Everybody, it's Otto's birthday today. Happy birthday to you.
And finally, Auden Chan of Westlake Hills, and her teacher is Melissa Soblet.
Do we want to do a big picture, or are we good? Yeah, let's do a big picture. You guys, come on.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor? I'd just like to say that I read the essays, as I'm sure you did. They were all excellent. I really appreciated them. Banyon winning two with all the different elementary schools we have is quite an honor, I would think. And I noticed Westlake Hills was there again. It seems like Westlake Hills is in it all the time, and Westlake, and Banyon, and was Acacia the other one? Yeah. Acacia's where we held meetings when we planned the city 50 years ago, in the multipurpose room there. So, thanks a lot. They were great essays.
And when you were planning that school, I was being born. Just saying.
I'm very glad about that.
Madam Clerk, will you please announce the public comments?
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for City Council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Eight individuals have presented cards. In pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes, and the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker tonight will be Paige Nielsen. Welcome, Paige. Take your time. And Vitili Gissin? I hope I pronounced that right. If I didn't, you can correct me. Welcome, Paige.
Thank you.
You get three minutes tonight, instead of two.
I can't believe, I can't believe I'm first. Okay.
Just take a deep breath.
Thank you. Nice to see you all. So, we are concerned about the advice and counsel Mr. Kramer's giving you. There are hundreds of top scientists who have proven waves do harm to humans despite what journalist, telecom industry, and Thousand Oaks Wireless consultant/attorney Jonathan Kramer says that waves don't do harm. He said on March 5, 2019, that every tower application in the last 34 years has crossed his desk. So, he approved the cell towers on top of stoplights where schoolchildren cross the intersections? Did he approve cell towers hidden in the Los Robles Regional Medical Center or in the parks and churches, too? Why does he keep saying that non-ionizing radiation cannot affect human beings? What world is he living in withholding truth and scientific facts from all of you and the residents? We are too smart to believe one view of something, especially when it comes to protecting our children, families, pets, environment, and property values. Does his firm believe that making poor decisions is the truth and that it's protecting us? We aren't giving up. We aren't going away. We will continue speaking up for everyone else in our community who are afraid to public speak or unable to come here because of work and family. My advice to all is to listen to Dr. Trevor Marshall, who lives in our community and is a known and respected worldwide, is worldwide renowned. He has shared his knowledge the last two times at the council meetings. He is peer-reviewed, published in both wireless engineering and human biology, and has been a member of several clinical research teams, as well as holding patents for a therapy called the Marshall Protocol to cure people from chronic disease. Some people initially said it was quackery, but with 20 years of success behind him and his teams, the patent-operated technology is being run by the people whose lives it saved. Please listen to the experts like Dr. Marshall and other doctors and scientists who have been coming here at every city council meeting, educating all of us. We requested a second meeting with Congressman Julia Brownlee. She is getting back to me about that, about all this 5G topic, to hold a town hall meeting. We are asking you to please hold a public hearing informing our citizens of what is happening with these towers. We would like to meet with you still. We're still trying to sit down. I know with the Brown Act, you can't two-and-two talk, but we would just like some response back to please. We're running out of time before these pop up. I was down Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and I saw new antennas up on top of the light posts, and I was shocked. I couldn't believe it, because I know we don't have any 5G, but I believe it's 4G. And I have meters that I've purchased, that I'm going to go out and read the readings, so I'll come back to you with what the readings are. Many people are calling all of us that have been here, contacting us by email and asking for help. They don't know what to do, so that's why we're asking if we could please meet with you, have a public hearing. Those who have nothing to hide, hide nothing. We are here with all the experts to just please tell our community.
We give you an extra minute.
Sorry.
You've got to stay on time, everybody.
I didn't see the beep.
Thank you. And by the way, folks, just to let you know, there'll be, there's a letter that went out to Dianne Feinstein, Kamala Harris, both our senators, and Congresswoman Julia Brownlee. So, it's on behalf of the city, signed by me. It'll be up on the fax page. I think you'll appreciate it. Vitale, is that how we say your name? I'm sorry, friend.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My name is Vitale Gissin, and from my name you can hear that I'm not fully American. I spent half of my life outside of the United States, so I think I have a fresh vision and understanding of what is maybe good, what is maybe not. So, two things that really prompted me to be here today. Number one is due to the nature of my lifestyle. Oftentimes, I have to leave my house for a few days, maybe up to a week, maybe sometimes two weeks. Every time I come back, my entire house is decorated by annoying ads everywhere, like plastic bags, little ads stuck to my door. So, I really feel that this is a problem, because essentially that creates a very obvious image that this house is unoccupied, and it, I have no way of stopping this, because technically, anybody who can stop by, he can stick. And there is a mailbox for things like that. This is printed materials. I understand Big Long USPS, so they can legally use that. But what I did, I basically asked citizens around Newbury Park if we have enough supporters. And surprisingly enough, quite a significant number, probably around 50, more than 50%, people agreed that it probably would be a great idea to do something about this, because, you know, if people want to advertise certain things, might as well put a stamp and send it through the mail. But trashing my house is, I should be illegal to some degree. So, that is issue number one I'm here. And number two is, I mean, of course, it's coincidental. I read on Agenda that there is a change in the policy or that could be to be considered in regards to use of public spaces for homeless people. I am very sympathetic to the fact that some people may be unemployed or homeless, but I think what is important for us is to use common sense, because definitely some people require help, and we definitely can help, and we should help as a society. But at the same time, we shouldn't be bluntly giving that green light to everybody. We have to really try to screen. We have to really do the best we can to help these people. If we cannot establish strong enough programs, maybe then we should work on these programs. But just letting these people sleep outside everywhere is going to make this wonderful, clean, child, family-friendly neighborhood into something that is already happening in the streets of San Francisco or downtown Los Angeles. It's a real shame to see that when I invite my friends from outside of the United States to see San Francisco, they look at Marcus, they're like, "What's going on? Is this normal? I don't think it is." But somebody let it happen, and I think if we make the change that is on Agenda today, there is a good chance that Thousand Oaks is going to become like this. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Well, we just broke the magical 20 marker, so we're down to two minutes for public comments. Our next speaker will be Audrey Bruckner, and then following Audrey will be Michael Hernandez. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
I'm sure that as local government representatives, you want to make the best decisions for your constituents. The choices you make now will have a huge impact upon future generations. For example, let's say the city wants to create a park within a neighborhood. Would you tell the taxpayers who live in that neighborhood that they have no choice about the park? That they are not allowed to discuss their concerns about the traffic which will be generated as a result? Of course, this would never happen in a progressive community like Thousand Oaks. But isn't this exactly what the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, is doing with its mandatory rollout of 5G? They are not allowing anyone to discuss health issues, which is a huge concern for people. Is the FCC doing this because they don't have the answers? Could it be that they are so weak in this area that they cannot afford to be transparent with the public, that too much is at stake? Could this be why they are in such a rush to install the equipment before it is carefully researched out? Does this strong-armed approach resonate with the philosophy of the founding fathers of our great nation? The 5G rollout is backed by big investors to the tune of trillions upon trillions of dollars. That's a lot of money to be made or wasted, depending on how you view this project. 5G requires 20,000 satellites to be fully activated globally. This is a new technology which has never been proven safe. Shouldn't the burden of proof be on the FCC? How can we possibly support such a flawed project? There must be a reason why Belgium, Israel, and the Vatican have all banned 5G. Currently, the telecom industry, the driving force behind the FCC, far exceeds the pharmaceutical industry in wealth and power. Let us change the modern-day golden rule from "he who has the gold makes the rules" back to the one of universal truth. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Let this be our motto as we unite in peaceful solidarity and co-create a plan that works for every single person in our community, so that they can thrive on all levels. Can this be done? Absolutely. Hold that vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Hernandez, followed by Ellen.
I do have some things I'm going to show, so I'll put the first one up. I'll be showing a couple of things as I speak. Hi, I'm Mike Hernandez, President and CEO of Historymakers International, a Thousand Oaks community nonprofit. Historymakers is called to heal the breaches in history, connect generations past, present, and future. Call forth the next generation to become light in the city, and call the next generation to rebuild, raise up, repair, and restore the city gates. I would like to give special thanks to Mayor Rod McCoy for opening up Godspeed Calvary to serve youth and families through the Thousand Oaks Youth Leadership Academy, which begins each Thursday in June with a 6:00 PM family barbecue. Now, let me introduce you to a new leadership program, one year in the making, designed by Historymakers International, the Thousand Oaks Youth Leadership Academy for middle school and high school students. You can see we have four major topics: An Introduction to Leadership, Freedom, True Liberty, Morality and Character, The Birth of a Nation, Servant Leadership, Past, Present, and Future. You'll be seeing some of these participants at future city council meetings in June. Our youth will also be involved in four hours of community service and have a chance to tour City Hall. I'd like to commend City Council for their sponsorship of the Thousand Oaks Youth Commission that gives an opportunity for youth in our community to serve other youth. Two of our leaders of that commission are graduating this year. I also want to commend Adult Youth Commissioner Pete Martinez for winning a national award for his work with youth. Next, I would like to commend Bob Engler for representing the City of Thousand Oaks at the Rotary Club of Thousand Oaks 33rd Annual Youth Citizenship Award Program held May 16. Finally, I would like to issue a City Council challenge. Will you nominate and sponsor two youth candidates to attend the Thousand Oaks Youth Leadership Academy? Thank you again for your faithful service to our community and for supporting the youth of Thousand Oaks.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ellen, you're up, and then Tanya.
Hello. Please, I would like you to improve and update the 2064 Vision to Protect Rather Than Harm Public Health. In light of the established science of wireless radiation effects and the lack of safety testing of 5G, we need the city to set the priority for less and not more citywide radiation exposure. Page 12 of your 2064 report says that you are going to move towards becoming a smart and wireless-connected city with complete wireless coverage, and then it repeats, and it says more complete wireless coverage. It then later says internet coverage for everyone. It says, "Find ways to enhance internet availability throughout the community." Then read page four, "to maintain equality of life, including public safety." It's "to operate in open and transparent manner, to maintain public trust and promote accountability, to enhance the effectiveness of our city operations." We need that disclosure from you. We've been talking to you for months. It feels a bit underhanded that this hasn't come into the picture, because we're working as a community for you here. We are trying to work together with you. He just, the first gentleman before me just spoke of children in the future. Those beautiful children were just here, intelligent, striving for their futures were here. We, all of us, have no right to take those children's futures away. That is largely in your control. Tracy Noonan, I'm partially talking to you specifically.
You can address, you address your comments to the council, please.
Okay. We have, many, many people here have given you the knowledge to set up a system that makes it safe for us. We have no right to take away their future, and kids already, I just heard on 1070, a mainstream radio, a pediatrician was saying that children are coming into his office, and he is observing symptoms of Alzheimer's disease that he believes are directly connected to the amount of wireless Wi-Fi and cellphone usage. Children at a pediatrician's office. Already, it has been established that most everyone here, because of our radiation exposure, is going to start having, are going to start having symptoms of Alzheimer's before middle age. That's a crisis. So, what's important here is to have a vibrant city, not a seedy, full of wireless, fantastic things, that are amazing what we can do, but there's no one there to use it in a healthy manner. That doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanya, followed by Mandy Jacob. Is Tanya here?
Yep, yeah, I'm here.
Oh, come on.
Oh, sorry.
Red Rover, Red Rover, come on over.
Hello, City Council. You might have to focus a little bit.
You might have to focus a little bit more because I have an accent, and I might have to do some speed reading.
It's okay.
Here we go. So this speech is to prove to you that the City of Thousand Oaks can amend their ordinance, just like all the other cities in California and the western United States. A wonderful resolution has been adopted by the City of Portland. Not only did they take a stand to protect their residents, but they requested that the federal government update studies on the potential health risks of 5G radio frequency wireless emissions and publish the findings. Here is the powerful opening statement from the City of Eugene, Oregon. Many people believe that the federal government, through FCC regulations, can impose those regulations on the City of Eugene. They believe that because of the FCC, 5G in Eugene is inevitable. This is not true. The Supreme Court of the United States has come up with what they call the anti-commandeering doctrine, which in essence says that the federal government cannot make states, their subdivisions, or offices comply with any federal programs. Hundreds of cities are suing the FCC on this very principle. Another example is Danville, California. On March 5, 2019, a large number of citizens of Danville stood up and spoke against Verizon, and the town council listened. The Danville Town Council voted 4 to 1 to deny a land use permit for Verizon. Below, you will find two excerpts, one from the statements of FCC Commissioner Ajit Pai, sorry for the mispronunciation, dissenting from his own agency by overthrowing state jurisdiction. The Supreme Court agreed with him, and the FCC lost the case. Here is an excerpt from a Tenth Amendment Center article explaining this principle in greater detail. We must all stop spreading the false rumor that states and cities have to comply with FCC rules. Instead, start spreading the world, sorry, the word, and the world, about the anti-commandeering, sorry, anti-commandeering doctrine, and demand that the city council make Eugene a 5G smart meter-free zone. So in closing, I just want to say that speaking up does make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And your accent wasn't hard to understand at all. Mandy, you have one too. South African, right?
Sorry.
That's all right. Mandy, you're up, and then following Mandy will be Krista Pedersen.
Hi, City Council members. Thank you for hearing me week after week. I just wanted to say for the record that none of the EMF people, there were about eight last time, none of them can make it this evening, so just so public records knows they wanted to be here. But those kind of people take three or four days to recuperate, so unfortunately, they won't be here. I had a very interesting conversation with someone. I don't know, every week I keep saying, you know, let's not lose local control, and we keep bringing up all these wonderful cities that have done things still within the means of the FCC guidelines, but now we're actually lagging behind the Ventura County cities. As you know, Ventura County now has put a 1,500-foot setback on their residential areas. Camarillo's done 600 feet. And a friend of mine has a business in Ventura, and she said to me, oh, that's new, I didn't know about that. Maybe my husband and I should move to Ventura County, Ventura City. And that's just, when I first spoke to you, that was the first thing I said, all health issues aside, we're worried about housing prices, just like Sonoma County, they experienced a 25% drop in their housing prices. That boils down to lower tax rates for the city, and then there ends up being this mass exodus. And so we're already seeing this happen. And that's what I keep asking, please, can we be the point of most resistance? And like we keep asking, just three lines to the ordinance would help suffice without getting the telecoms upset and by applying the same thing to the FCC. So that was really interesting.
Would you repeat that, please?
The ordinances that we've been asking for would just literally be about three lines, and by doing that, we wouldn't upset the telecoms. So I know as a city council, we're worried about being sued like we were with Verizon, so we wouldn't bring that up again. And then, again, we'd be making the FCC happy because we'd be either doing the ordinance through your, we just amended.
Thank you.
Okay, three lines. The other thing that I wanted to add to that is we keep talking about the Ninth District Circuit Court. Again, if that fails, and the FCC fails in that, and they have already, one out of one, so hopefully it'll be three out of three. It's, again, another issue for the city, because people like this who are forced to leave, like those EMF people that's sensitive, they're going to come back and sue the city. And then you're up again for damages and negligence. So not only do we have a lower tax bracket now to pull from, we've got more liabilities on the city. So I just keep saying you do have local control, and please, now, even the cities here in Ventura County are moving. If we could move as well, that would be great. And finally, I found out via social media that there are now two law firms that are taking action against the City of Thousand Oaks. And this was exactly what I asked. We don't want a tidal wave coming. Can we please start speaking? We've been asking for three months. We're so ready to come and talk to you guys. We have, I mean, I'm not qualified, but there are much more qualified people that would like to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. Krista, followed by Wanda. Help me with that last name. Wanda Calio, okay. You're after Krista. Hello.
Good evening. Good evening, City Council members. My name's Krista Pedersen. Thank you for hearing me speak tonight. My family has resided in Thousand Oaks since the sheep were still being herded down Thousand Oaks Boulevard. I love my city. I'm proud of my city. I've never been to one of these meetings before, but when I read about the fact that other cities have thwarted 5G, and our city still hasn't made moves to follow suit, I wanted to come speak with you. The city is hiding behind the false idea that they have no option, according to the FCC. I'm here tonight to present you with some hope. We do, in fact, have many available options to us, the most important being the Tenth Amendment. This was specifically written to ensure that there is no overreach of the government on the state. As you've been saying, you have, in effect, lost all of your authority through the FCC. Currently, applications for new installations of cell towers are made by telecom via a Planning Commission public hearing. Now it seems as though all of your authority is lost, because FCC has dictated that local agencies cannot put in place rules that have the effect of prohibiting wireless service, neither charge excessive processing fees, nor refuse to accept batch application for multiple facilities. However, in Metro PCS versus San Francisco, the Ninth Circuit Court's 2005 decision defined the need for a wireless carrier to prove that a significant gap in coverage actually exists, and then directs the carrier to use the least intrusive means to close any significant gap. Herein lies the solution to your problem, because you can make the cellphone company prove that gap. Often, telecom companies apply for installations only to increase their network capacity for data usage and not for a significant gap in coverage. So not only do we have the Tenth Amendment and this Metro PCS versus San Francisco, but we could pursue an aesthetic ordinance. Here's an astounding fact. It was admitted by Verizon CEO Lowell McAdam that, in truth, the 5G cell towers only need to be 3,000 feet apart in order to avoid getting a significant gap in coverage. Applications made for cell towers every 3,000 feet would then decrease the cell towers from the estimated 5,000 by Jonathan Kramer, both your wireless consultant and an employee of Telecom Law, to about 500. That being said, we only have 144G towers currently, so we would still have the ability to pursue an aesthetic ordinance. You can go to MyStreetMyChoice.com for more details. Please, City Council members, I implore you to simply not throw up your hands and resign yourself to the FCC. Please put this issue on the agenda so we can vote on real solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Wanda, you're next, and then following Wanda will be Chase Rashid.
Wanda Calio, from Thousand Oaks.
Welcome.
For 51 years plus. I just wanted to say that the FCC is overstepping its boundaries. Its efforts to fast-track the deployment of millions of new RF microwave antennas are an assault on local as well as state rights, as well as all the public. And if everyone agrees, they can just go to VCIr.net/halt5g.com, and I allocate my, the rest of my time to whomever needs it.
Thank you, Wanda. Chase Rashid, followed by Vadim Montoz. Good evening, Chase.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm here to talk about charity karaoke. It's an event put on by the Conejo Senior Volunteer Program. There's lots of charities participating. I'm going to be singing for SAFE, Senior Alliance for Empowerment. My mom is going to be singing for Harbor House. She's on the board of directors there, and, you know, if anybody wants to donate to any of the charities, that would be greatly appreciated. The event is on August 11th at the Canyon in Ogora Hills, so thank you.
Wait, 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 what song are you singing?
"What You Won't Do for Love" by Bobby Caldwell.
That's worth the price of admission. Thank you, Chase. What's the name of the event, Mr. Mayor? Charity karaoke. Vadim, and then following Vadim will be Carol Tasetta. Welcome, Vadim.
Good evening, City Council members, mayor. Last time I spoke, and I realized that I forgot to provide my email, which is sagebees@gmail.com. And I'm repeating my offer to place my beehives near to the 4G towers to prove that they are negatively affecting on a bee's lives and brood development and overall health of the hives. And it's easy, because, you know, number one, bee lives only 45 days in general in a summer, so then we all, in one and a half months, will know how negative the impact is. And also, I was reading more, watching some YouTube videos about negative effects of 5G and 4G, and I wanted to share with you that my youngest daughter, who is 16 years old, a Newbury Park High School attendee, cheerleader, very healthy girl, because she eats a lot of honeybee pollen, does chin-ups, push-ups, just name it, and she has constantly nosebleeding. And this week, I found out that the main reason, because doctors have no clue, we took her to many different doctors, they had no explanation, they, firm explanation, so I'm started to think that it's a 4G effect. Yep, and, you know, she can confirm, but she's too shy to show up and talk in front of so many people. Again, my offer stands firm. I can invest my beehives, up to five, to place them near 4G towers. Please contact me at sagebees@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Vadim. Carol Tasetta, followed by Lorena Sarvunatari.
Hi there.
Hello.
Mayor McCoy and City Council, and again, I'm nervous, my second time. It should get easier each time.
You're becoming like professional, this.
I am. When I was in med school back in the 80s, I spent some time at the CDC, working on the Surgeon General's Report, and I co-authored a chapter in the 1989 report on the Surgeon General, "25 Years of Progress: Reducing the Health Consequences of Smoking." Some of you might remember, in 1964 was when the first Surgeon General's Report came out about smoking, and it wasn't until 1972 that passive involuntary smoking, which we all call now secondhand smoking, was first discussed. And I remember distinctly, because in the 70s, as a teenager, I would yell at my dad to smoke on the porch so that I wouldn't have to smell it. And so somehow, we had that message in the 70s. But it wasn't until '86 that the Surgeon General found exclusively that this was an issue. And now we don't even think twice about it. None of us are allowed to smoke here. And I mention this because I think that radiation, wireless radiation, non-ionizing radiation is a very similar story. The FCC has outdated studies, I mean, they haven't studied humans much at all, certainly not children, and it might be 25, 30 years before we find out the effects of non-ionizing radiation. And it's just the way things go. Science and technology are often way, way ahead of people's beliefs. In fact, the chapter I co-authored was, I forgot, it's been so long. It was, it was, oh, Trends in Public Beliefs, Attitudes, and Opinions About Smoking. So that was back in the 80s, and now people laugh if we said secondhand smoke was a non-issue. The American Academy of Pediatrics, they know that children's skulls are thinner, absorb more radiation. I've unfortunately, as a pathologist, seen the insides of children, and I can attest that factually, their organs are much smaller, they weigh less, and they're very, very vulnerable to everything from drugs to radiation to anything in the environment that's hurtful. And the American Academy of Pediatrics has called for the adoption of the precautionary principle to protect children and pregnant women from radiation emitted by cell phones and wireless devices. And a precautionary principle is a principle that's very, that can actually become law in Europe. We don't quite do it that way. But it implies that there's a social responsibility to protect the public from exposure to harm when scientific investigation has, sorry, reading my doctor's notes, sorry, has seen a plausible risk, I think. You can look it up.
You're going to have to put a caboose on the comment train here shortly. Your time's up.
Okay.
You have a final thought you want to?
No, just that our opinions might, we might, 30 years from now, God, hoping we're all here, we might say, man, I'm glad we made the decision to not have cell towers in front of our homes. I hope that's a decision we can look back and make.
Thank you so much. Lorena, you're up next. Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here again, one more time. Hopefully, this will be the last time, and hopefully, we will get some results. And hopefully, you should show mercy on us regarding 5G. So why then have we simply given up a hidden behind the FCC regulations? We have taken the doomsday approach on our beautiful city as I have to, instead of being too strong and taking back our local authority. If we thought we had problems with the fires, then why would we allow at least 4,000 small cell towers to pop up everywhere, about 250 feet in front of our homes, when it has been proven that these towers are easily susceptible to fires? Have we forgotten so quickly? Now, did you know that cellphone manufacturers have issued warnings to shareholders, not customers, but shareholders, that they may eventually be held liable for the harm they have caused to their customers? Now, on top of that, also, the secondary medical insurance have told the wireless companies that they will not be, they will not be providing coverage for anyone with problems coming out from the cause by the technology, cell phones and the towers. We need to write a protective wireless ordinance that will be in compliance with the FCC, but at the same time, will be the aesthetic standards of ordinance to ensure that the city isn't hit by any fires or sued by liability of breaking ADA, I'm sorry, ADA Code, which is an Americans with Disabilities Act, not to mention the impending decrease in our property values. Please go to the website, MyStreetMyChoice.com, and sign the petition against installation of 5G cell towers in front of your house, because there is lots of information there to tell you about the scientifically proven health effects of these carcinogenic towers. And now I just wanted to show you a little device. We have gone by Borcher and Reno to test a tower that is there, and right now, it's green, so we are safe over here of radiation, but when it turns red, that means we're being exposed to microwave radiation. And if the person who invented this little apparatus is Dr. Trevor Marshall, he has gone all across the country, not only across the country, but across the world, you know, teaching people about protecting themselves from radiation emitting from the cell towers. Thank you so much.
We have one more card, but the agenda item number wasn't listed, and it's It is for Angela Cordero. Did you want to speak on this topic? 5G, come on up. Hello.
Hi, I'm Angela. Hi, guys. Yeah, clearly, I don't know anything about how to fill out a card.
It's okay. You did great, other than just what you wanted to talk on.
And I'm, I'm more of a speak from the heart, so I don't have anything written down. But I appreciate each and every one of you, and everyone that's spoken is so articulate, and there's so much to talk about on the topic of 5G. I've been studying it for three years, and I'm going to get a little emotional, because I moved to Thousand Oaks in July of last year. And in rapid succession, we had Borderline, and we had the wildfires. And just as we're coming out of that, I find out that we may be getting 5G, so. I have a small daughter, and I was told that when you become a mom, you find inner strength that you don't know that you have. And on this topic, I'm finding my inner strength. And, you know, we have that hashtag, #ToStrong. And I just really encourage you. It's hard to be the first. It's hard to be the first. It's hard to do what's right. But you have us, and you have each other, and we have each other. And I'm just praying for all of us, so, thank you.
Thank you. Very kind words to conclude our public comments. Thank you so much. Well, that brings us to the consent calendar. Oh, you want some comments on that? Sorry.
Just a, just a couple, very, very brief, I know we have a long night ahead of us, comments. One of the speakers mentioned charity karaoke. For those that aren't familiar with that event, it's a great fundraising event, and I encourage everyone to take a look and, and consider getting involved. Obviously, we've made a number of comments through the weeks that we've had, had speakers here. And I'm not going to go through the full, full host, but certainly for those that are perhaps new here this evening, the reason that we have upped our ordinance and every other city across the state and the country is doing so is because of actions taken by the FCC in February of this year that changed the law of the land. And so, the ordinance that the council has taken into effect here is similar to those taken across the state of California and across the country, attempting to put as many protections in place as they can within the confines of the law. I want to encourage everyone here, and I know some of you have been great advocates at lobbying the federal government and our, our senators, members of Congress, the FCC. It is making an impact. As Mayor McCoy mentioned, he sent yet another letter. The county, the city has been fighting against these types of usurpations of local control for many years. And as I've said in previous weeks, it's really, really important to continue to keep that pressure, as difficult as it is in Washington DC. They are the ones that can change this law. And we, we want to see it changed, just like everyone, just like everyone else that works in municipal government in California. So, we have a section on our website that has all that contact information, that has a lot of FAQs on this issue, ToOaks dot org slash wireless. I encourage you to continue to take a look at that. One other thing I wanted to mention is that the previous meeting, we had folks pointing out some specific areas of town where they thought they'd seen 5G installations. Just, I did have our Public Works crews go around and take a look at those areas. Each of those, those spots, especially the ones on Cannon Road, those are all gas company smart meters that have been installed on Edison poles. So, that is not telecommunications technology from the telecommunications providers, but it is certainly technology that is providing smart metering for the gas company. To date, we've still received no applications for 5G. So, that's Tracy.
Yeah, I'm not going to repeat what Drew said, but just a couple of follow-up comments for those who were here last week, probably will hear me say a few things that are the same and some new things. First of all, again, to reiterate, the law that regulates RF health and safety concerns does not come from the FCC regulations. They come from the 1996 Federal Telecommunications Act, which means for over 20 years, cities have been unable to regulate the provision of wireless services based on concerns over public health and safety. So, yes, there are legal challenges to the, to the new FCC rules regarding small cell wireless facilities, but they do not touch the RF issue, because it's completely preempted and has been for over 20 years. The city is a member of the legal, California cities, is part of the legal challenge to those FCC regulations. But even if we're successful, it will not result in cities being able to regulate wireless facilities based on health and safety concerns over RF. As discussed at the last meeting, with respect to that lawsuit, there is, just recently, the Ninth Circuit put forth a briefing schedule for the parties to submit their legal briefs, their pleadings, their arguments on the case. We are hopeful that we'll have a decision sometime next year on this regulation. Now, someone mentioned tonight that, that some people were not able to come tonight because of concerns over RF emissions. I actually, prior to the meeting, talked to our city clerk, asked if we, or in my staff, if we had received any communications from anyone regarding concerns from attending tonight. We did not receive any, so if there is someone who does have a concern, I encourage you to call the city, so we can discuss that. Someone else mentioned that there's two law firms that have taken action against the city. I'm not aware of any lawsuits that have been filed against the city. We've not been served with any lawsuits, so I'm not sure if that's accurate or not. One, there's a lot of suggestions. Every time we've talked about this is, you know, look at, look at Mill Valley's ordinance, look at Danville's ordinance. And so, every time we leave, my staff, we go home and we look at other cities' ordinance to see, does it in fact say what is being presented tonight? And I will tell you that every city ordinance that my office has reviewed has what are called waiver or exception language in it. For example, it might say that a small cell wireless facility can be no closer than 1,000 feet from a residential structure. But that same ordinance also says that this requirement does not apply if it results in violating federal laws, or if the wireless provider proves that it needs to construct a facility within 1,000 feet in order to provide wireless services. It's not an absolute rule, and it can't be absolute based on the 1996 Federal Telecommunications Act. I do encourage you to read the actual language of the city's ordinance. Don't trust me, don't rely on me, don't rely on what you're reading in the newspaper. Sorry, Mark and Becca. Read the ordinance yourself. It directs small cell wireless facilities to commercial and industrial locations. It designates those as preferred locations. And by doing that, we are allowed to say, you cannot put a wireless facility in a non-preferred location unless a wireless provider proves by clear and convincing evidence that that is the only place it can go. By writing the language in that manner, it provides the city ultimate flexibility to put the burden of proof on the wireless provider as to why they cannot construct their facilities in commercial and industrial locations. Again, I encourage you to read the actual ordinance. Oh, and one last thing. Councilmember Bill Delapena just received some information from a county board supervisor regarding Ventura County's ordinance. Their setback requirement is only 50 feet. So, that's all I have for night on this issue.
Thank you, Ms. Noonan. Folks, thanks for coming out. Thanks for sharing. We're working through it. You'll take a look, the letter will be posted. I think I gave it to one person in the, I don't have a bunch of copies of it, it was just put out today. So, thank you for sharing with us and all your hard work. We're, we're just with you, and we're working towards it, so, thank you. That takes us to Agenda, Agenda number seven, item number seven, Consent Calendar. Any questions at the council? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll motion the consent calendar if there's nothing to be polled.
Madam Clerk, will you put the vote together, please? Thank you.
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number eight, Public Hearing, Municipal Code Amendment to Amend Certain Sections of Title V Regarding Camping and Prohibition on Sitting and Lying in Certain Public Places. Tonight, we have Felicia Lieberman, Assistant City Attorney, sharing with us. Tim Hagel, Chief of Police. And as we get ready to undertake this, I, I wanted to say that the article I read today was accurate. I don't know that the headline was, but I was thankful for the article itself. It shed a lot of light on it. And I think tonight, the citizens will be relieved to hear why we're doing what we're doing, so take it over.
Mayor, if I could just quickly open the public hearing and state that we do have five individuals that are here to speak tonight. They will have five minutes, and the yellow light will display when they have one minute remaining.
Thank you for making me look so professional. I appreciate that, Madam Clerk. All right, so you guys, take over, share with us.
Good evening, Mayor McCoy and members of the City Council. Tonight, we are presenting to you-
Is your speaker on?
It sure is. Am I not talking?
Well, can you work on your voice?
There's no-
Louder, meaning, that's what I, wasn't an insult.
Oh. Excuse me, I'm having difficulties here. There we go. Thank you. Sorry about that. Tonight, we are presenting to you amendments to Title V, Chapter 8 of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code pertaining to camping and the prohibition on sitting and lying in certain public places. Current regulations prohibit camping on public property and private property open to the public. Current regulations also prohibit sitting and lying on certain areas of public property, but only within commercial zones. It does not impose these regulations on other areas of the city, such as residential areas or industrial areas. The impetus for amending these code sections at this time is a federal court decision which came out in September 2018. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals issued a decision in the case of Martin versus City of Boise, which challenged, I'm sorry, which changed the landscape of how matters relating to sleeping in public could be handled by cities. In Boise, multiple individuals were cited for camping on public property or sleeping in public buildings or places in violation of the city's ordinance. The court concluded that these individuals' Eighth Amendment right against cruel and unusual punishment were violated when the city criminalized the act of sleeping via the city's camping ordinance, where no other shelter was practically available. The court held that the Eighth Amendment prohibits the imposition of criminal penalties for sitting, sleeping, or lying outside on public property for homeless individuals who cannot obtain shelter. The court further explained its rationale for its holding by stating, as long as there is no option of sleeping indoors, the government cannot criminalize indigent homeless people for sleeping outdoors on public property on the false premise that they had a choice in the matter. The two primary effects of this court decision are, one, it prohibits cities from criminalizing homelessness. And two, when no shelter is available, all cities are required to allow individuals to sleep on public property. The amendments before you tonight make changes to the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code to comply with the Boise decision. It also strengthens the city's ability to regulate camping and sleeping on public property in the city. It does this in a number of ways. First, the definition of camping will no longer include sleeping. By distinguishing camping from sleeping, the city is able to regulate both in compliance with Boise. More importantly, it allows the city to completely prohibit the act of camping on public property in the entire city. Second, it removes private property open to the public from the definition of public place. This gives private property owners more control of their property and allows them to enjoy all available property rights, including the right to exclude others. Third, it restricts sleeping to certain hours, between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Fourth, it prohibits sleeping, not just camping, in public space based on significant public health and safety concerns, including the threat of wildfires, protecting ecologically sensitive habitats, and other wildlife considerations. And finally, it strengthens our ability to remove abandoned property. Currently, our ordinance requires the city to post a notice that property will be removed in seven days. The amendment reduces this notice period to 72 hours, so staff can remove it sooner. It is also important to understand what the Boise case and the proposed amendments before you do not do. It does not require a city to provide shelter. It does not allow individuals to sit, lie, or sleep on public property at any time or at any place in the city. It does not give individuals the right to pitch a tent or camp on public property, even if they have no other place to go. Under Boise, individuals only have the right to sleep, with at most rudimentary bedding. It does not allow excess belongings on public property. It does not allow sleeping on public property when there is somewhere else to go. It does not allow sleeping on public property during daylight hours. Finally, it does not allow blockage of pedestrian or vehicles. To reiterate, at no time can an individual pitch a tent, erect a campsite, or bring excess belongings other than rudimentary bedding onto public property. The Boise decision does not just impact the City of Thousand Oaks, it impacts cities throughout the western United States, who are under the supervision of the Ninth Circuit. Without these amendments, which strengthen our ordinance, the city will have no power to regulate the use of public property for sleeping and camping. The proposed changes before you will align the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code with federal law, and will strengthen the city's ability to ensure the best use of its property for all its citizens. In addition, in your supplemental report, the city attorney's office has clarified additional language in the proposed amendment that will allow sleeping on public property only when there are no other shelter options available. The amendments under consideration include this revision. I'm going to turn this discussion over to Assistant City Manager Grid Hardy for additional
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council.
Good evening.
The City, City Council Ad-Hoc Committee on Homelessness has been working through this highly complex issue of homelessness for over a year. In October 2018, the ad hoc committee presented a comprehensive report to the full city council that outlined the committee's areas of focus and recommendations. Tonight's actions align with the intent of two specific areas of focus and recommendations from that report. First, responding to disruptions of the enjoyment and usage of public spaces, spaces by providing safe, sanitary, and accessible public spaces. The code amendment, yes, complies with federal law, but just as important, it strengthens the city's ability to regulate camping and sleeping on public property and in public spaces. Secondly, the October 2018 report also included a recommendation on taking administrative actions that continue to develop and strengthen the city's response to homelessness, such as aligning and coordinating the city's efforts and responses. The recommended code amendment was done in coordination between city staff and the police department before being brought forth to the city council tonight for consideration. And it was also shared with the ad hoc committee. It gives the police department a better tool for enforcement, and it strengthens the city's ability to remove abandoned property more swiftly. One important reminder for context is that the City of Thousand Oaks has a relatively small homeless population for a city our size. The code amendment, which is one of many actions taken by the city council to address homelessness, is another tool to help the city manage and respond to the small homeless population we currently have. Contrary to popular, popular belief, many of the homeless individuals in Thousand Oaks have roots and ties to this community. Our police department, as social service providers, know, generally know who's homeless, why they're homeless, and how long they have been homeless. In fact, the police department, vulnerable population officers, work tirelessly in conjunction with social service providers, such as the County of Insurance Behavioral Health, Harbor House, and Lutheran Social Services, to connect persons experiencing homelessness to much-needed services and housing. I thought it was important to remind the public of the city's comprehensive and collaborative efforts to respond to homelessness, an issue that no city is immune to. I encourage the public to visit the city's website to learn more about what the city is doing in regards to homelessness. And the website is ToOaks dot org backslash homelessness. I will now turn- I will now turn the presentation back over to Felicia.
Thank you. So, at this time, we request that the City Council approves staff's recommendation that's before you, and this concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Before we go to the council, Ms. Noonan, you had something you wanted to share.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. There's been a lot of media interest on this item, including a newspaper article that pretty accurately describes what is actually before the City Council tonight. Unfortunately, as mentioned by our mayor, the headline for that article was misleading, which I suspect is why we received many, many inquiries from people in the community today. So, before we get to council comments, or council questions and public comments, I want to reiterate and make a few things clear on what is before the City Council tonight and what the amendments to our ordinance does. First of all, the amendments strengthen the city's existing camping and sleeping ordinances. In other words, the city already has camping and sleeping ordinances that are in the city's municipal code. This, the amendments made tonight are actually going to strengthen those ordinances. These amendments also will allow the city to continue to completely prohibit both sleeping and camping in open space. It will also allow private property owners to protect their private property rights. It will also prohibit anyone from pitching any tents or camping on any public property, whether it's in open space, on a sidewalk, in front of City Hall, or in a parking lot. You will not be able to pitch a tent. You will not be able to camp on any public property in the city. And finally, it reduces the time period from seven to 72 hours, the city's ability to clear out property deemed abandoned. And, you know, I'm not sure if there's going to be any questions of our Police Chief Hagel, but I will tell you that that is one of the number-one calls for service that the Police Department gets is over the property that is left on certain areas of public space around the city. So, I just wanted to make, reiterate and make clear what the ordinance is doing, what the amendments to the ordinance is doing, and what they are not doing. But we're available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Noonan. Questions for the council? We're going to begin with Council Member, oh, excuse me, Mayor Protem, Adam?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Noonan. You summed it up quite well. I think there was a story in The Star today, and I think the content of the story was fairly accurate. However, the headline did give the impression that somehow or another, this city was encouraging or promoting sleeping in public places. Nothing could be further from the truth. The city has a homeless committee that's working diligently to prevent that very thing from happening. We're working with social service agencies across the city, whether it's Lutheran Social Services, the new Harbor House, our churches, to provide sleeping facilities for folks. So, by no means are we promoting this kind of thing, but we are bound by this Boise decision to comply because it found that it's unconstitutional to criminalize sleeping in a public place. However, we, that's the last thing we want here in Thousand Oaks, of course. But for the most part, as Tracy said, most of our ordinances tonight are actually being strengthened to protect public property and private property, our open spaces. And I'd like to talk with Chief Hagel for just a moment on a real-world example of how this ordinance is giving some private property owners some options that they didn't have before. There's a known problem behind CVS Pharmacy here in Thousand Oaks. It's become a gathering spot for homeless people, indigent people, I'm not sure how you'd want to characterize it. But Chief, on your reading of this ordinance now, what other options do private property owners that, you know, own that property behind CVS have that they didn't have before?
Yes, Councilmember Adam, I think that both City Attorney and Assistant City Attorney laid it out in really good terms. This allows the property owners civil remedies, whereas before that was constricted. So, by having, allowing, by changing this amendment, which hadn't been changed in both the camping and the lying/sitting amendments for 20 and 10 years respectively, or 12 years respectively, is this allows a civil remedy, let's say for the situation you're talking about, such as a CVS property, now, they will have their rights back to them to allow who and when and what they want to allow on their property, and they will be able to, just like you could at a restaurant or anywhere else, the right to refusal of allowing people to sleep and/or camp on their property and have civil remedies, go into court, and get a restraining order against a person. These are done in many other facets of society. Shopping centers have disruptive patrons that they actually get a court order that says this patron's not allowed in a shopping center, and then law enforcement, the Thousand Oaks Police Department, will be called to escort that person legally off of the property. So, we're, we're not only embracing this, we're excited as the Police Department because this really fills the second side of dealing with homelessness and indigent folks, right? You have the social services side, but just like all aspects of community, you have to have the enforcement side, too. So, we believe strongly this gives increased rights to our private businesses, and it gives us extensive tools. And if I could add one more thing, such as the CVS property, when someone is on public property next to private property, up without this amendment, they have a right to leave that abandoned property. We have to post it there for seven days. Their shopping carts, all their accoutrements of camping, all of that material, and the citizens get frustrated. So, we really appreciate what the City Attorney has done on this, meeting the constitutionality of the Ninth Circuit Court, and allowing law enforcement, that enforcement side of the tool, to much more rapid remove that property.
And we've cut that time from a week to 72 hours.
To 72 hours, which is also a standard with the states such as Caltrans and such. So, it's bringing us in alignment, and we're really looking forward to that.
I'm glad to hear you say that, Chief. I think that will come as a relief to the citizens of Thousand Oaks, and especially the private property owners, and I know we can count on you to enforce these-
Absolutely.
-ordinances, because as you say, there's a social side, and we're certainly aware of that. We're all human beings, and we want the best for people, but there's an enforcement side as well. And I know you're not going to allow tents and the like on our, on our streets, and we're going to keep things nice here in Thousand Oaks, and I'm glad to hear that that's going to be helpful to you.
Yeah, thank you. As presented, that's what this would allow us to do.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Adam, Ms. Lieberman, I too want to concur with the Mayor Protem and also the Chief. Great presentation. Just clear-cut, easy to understand, so thankful for it. It's going to bring us now to Councilmember Claudia Bill de La Peña.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. Before I arrived for the council meeting, I looked at Next Door, and just one headline that was not really accurate can really fan the flames on social media. It is just really unfortunate how so many people don't read past a headline or the first sentence of a post, and immediately then react to that headline that may or may not be accurate. So, to have this presentation here tonight is really, really helpful. However, there were questions posted on social media that I would like to ask here tonight, and that was, "Parents concerned about schools, and will there be homeless people sleeping next to the school in the grassy area which may belong to the school district, or maybe a park under the jurisdiction of CRPD?" What happens there?
Well, that, those areas are still public property. It would still fall under our ordinance as far as time restrictions. Certainly, certainly, they could not sleep during the daylight hours while school is in session, but those are public properties, and it would be up to those agencies to look at their ordinances or controlling codes to make amendments that they feel is appropriate under the Boise decision.
If I might add one more to that, particularly schools, and this is very important to understand, is that all of our schools in our school district here in the Caneo Valley have restricted areas under the education code. This does not supersede state law for protecting students and the facilities behind those restricted areas. So, what we're discussing about is open areas, such as parking lots and those, that are not particularly sidewalk areas in front of schools, but all of the really intrinsic areas of the school, everything where you see behind the fences and those areas, those are still protected by state law, where camping's not allowed, sleeping, access after-school activities.
One thing I'll also add to this is that I'm not aware of any city in the county or any agency in the county that has reconsidered or evaluated their camping or sleeping ordinances post Boise. I would anticipate that they will start doing that, however. So, whether it's, you know, the other public agencies in the city, or there are other cities in the county, or the county itself, I would suspect that they will begin evaluating their ordinances.
Thank you very much for that explanation. Appreciate it.
Did you have any other questions, Councilmember? Councilmember Angler?
Thank you, Mayor. I have some, really some points of clarification that I'd like to explore a little bit. First off, I think I'm happy with what the city is doing as far as reaching out and trying to help our homeless population. We have our dedicated police liaison that is working directly with our homeless population. Just at our last meeting, we decided to entertain hiring a full-time liaison here at the city to work with the nonprofits that are working with the homeless. We're making steps to help on that social side, and I'm glad to see that. In the Boise case, I want just a little clarification. I think sleeping, I understand, was now a right of people, is recognized that this is something that people need to live, and so there's no way, and I think that was the basis of that decision, is that correct?
Yes. The Ninth Circuit found that human beings have a fundamental biological need for sleep, and that they can't be, that the act of sleeping can't be criminalized because they have nowhere to go. So, that is what the Ninth Circuit ruled.
So, Boise basically said that it's okay to sleep in the areas, and what we're trying to do tonight is try to limit some of the areas where people can sleep in times?
And the times, yeah.
Right. That is correct.
Right. So, Boise, although recognizing the fundamental biological right to sleep, and also recognizes, and also acknowledged, in the opinion that cities do not have to allow that sleeping to occur whenever and wherever throughout public property. What this ordinance does is it identifies locations where even sleeping, that biological right, cannot take place, such as open space. So, that's one of the things that it does.
Thank you. One other, I have a nuanced question. I think, in my mind, as I was reading through some of the material, that we have public spaces or we have our public land. Can you help me further define those? In my mind, public spaces are those areas that are used by the public, such as the drugstore parking lot, and whereas we have public land, such as our lawn out in front of City Hall. Is that a good reading of that?
And I may also add, on top of Councilmember Angler's question, and Chief, maybe you could add to that, for example, COSCA land, open space, so.
There's a distinction between public property, which is city sidewalks and streets and parks, and parking lots that are owned by the city, as opposed to private property that happens to be open to the public, which is what we're removing from the definition tonight. So, members of the public have access to those areas, but they're not publicly owned. Now, open space, the lands owned by COSCA are public property for the public benefit, but we are excluding that entire area, based upon the reasons we discussed tonight, from being able to even sleep. And I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. I'm just going to give a couple of examples, just so I'm really firm on it, such as the lakes would be a public space, privately-owned public space. The mall would be a public space, but privately-owned?
Yeah, and I think I can give a little analogy with that. Private property, open to public access, is kind of a better way to understand it. So, think about Girl Scouts selling Girl Scout cookies in front of a store. They're there because of, it's constitutionally legal for them to be there, because it's public property, open, private property, open to public access. Someone expressing their First Amendment right of speech has a right to private property that is open to public access, your malls, your shopping centers, those areas. Not somebody's backyard, not somebody's front yard, not HOA property, not those type of properties. It's very, the courts of real is very specific, and that comes to us a lot on the enforcement side, where people are panhandling those type of things, blocking pedestrians. That is not, that is against the law to block access while it's on public, or private property and public access. You can't block people's access. So, again, kind of circling back around, by the city making this amendment, taking care of that private property that's open to public access, we're actually giving more rights back to the private property owner.
Okay, turning my attention a little bit to the open space, that we have our cherished open space. Currently, we have people living in the open space. Being an old firefighter, I know that that's a hazard in terms of cooking and that sort of thing in the open space. Are there other hazards that are out there, any wastes that we have to worry about?
Well, camping or sleeping in the open space brings a whole host of problems ecologically, health and safety. There are no restrooms available. There are protected species that thrive in the open space, from plant life to wildlife and animals. So, there are a lot of hazards that being in that area, living in that area, would pose to the open space.
And Councilmember, I might add, over our last three years of doing our surveys with our officers out in the field twice a year, we'd survey, locate homeless persons, about 70% live in encampments on public property areas that you're describing, open space, hills, ravines, culverts, that type of stuff, about 70%. So, it's really important that we have that ability to enforce the camping, making our camping ordinance constitutionally compliant, and our sleeping ordinance. And so, it's going to really help us. Every week, our two officers and our COSCA rangers are hands and feet on the ground inside of camps throughout our Caneo Valley, cleaning up camps. So, this is going to really help out.
And I have another question, I think, for our City Attorney. Some of the, some of the encampments are in watershed protection district properties. Does our ordinance cover those properties as well?
Right. The, as proposed, Felicia, you can correct me if I'm wrong, as proposed, it defines public spaces as any publicly-owned, government-owned property, which would include watershed protection district property. Obviously, and the Police Chief can also correct me on this, it's my understanding that if, if there is a situation where the police needs to move someone for camping or an encampment on, let's say, Caltrans property, we work with Caltrans on that. We don't just go in there and do it. We actually work with the public property owner.
Yes, that's correct. One of the things that we do is we'll actually give notice. It's almost like a private person giving a three-day eviction notice. We'll go in, we understand the rights of humans, and we will go in with our officers and our park rangers here in the Caneo Valley, and we'll go in and we'll give notice, and actually tell them, "Okay, we're coming back. Have all of your property out of here," and that is part of the seven-day notice process. Three days is reasonable to get your belongings and get stuff out of those areas, those public areas.
And my final question, Mayor, thank you. Currently, we do have street vendors who do cooking along the streets and make their living selling things on the street. Does this ordinance affect those street vendors, since they are cooking along the street? Is it something that, that is?
No, and the reason why is because the language of the ordinance says that you can't do it unless you have a permit. So, in order to be a lawful street vendor, you actually have to have a permit by the city.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the Chief, you know, we pass ordinances and do all sorts of things, and you and your- and do all sorts of things, and you and your staff have to enforce them. What do you do if you find somebody sleeping in a prohibited place according to the ordinance, say, in the middle of the night? What do you physically have to do?
Yes, so, well, let's talk about current practices, and then after this law is amended. I think the city attorney said it great, that you could probably go check numerous cities throughout Ventura County, and clearly through the 400-plus cities in California, and you'd find many of them have laws on the books that say you can't sit, you can't sleep, you can't camp. And I want to preface that by making this change, we get a lot of calls from the public and say, you're not enforcing this here, and I'm reading the law online, the current law says you should be. Well, it's unconstitutional. So by changing this, this does allow people to sleep from 10:00 at night to 6:00 in the morning. So in the middle of the night, we will not be, as long as it's not a health and safety violation, we will not be enforcing from someone sleeping on public property as long as they're not camping. So again, you're talking someone with a sleeping bag, not impeding pedestrian traffic, not posing a health or safety violation, which there are those, right? Not drinking in public, not using drugs, not impeding vehicles or cars, or impinging on private rights. Then those persons will have a right to rest.
So in other words, you don't have to do anything to them, you can leave them until 6:00 in the morning, isn't that?
Correct. Unless they're violating any other law that the state or federal government may have, such as environmental laws and such.
But do you, I don't want to run this into the ground, but do you go, actually go around at 6:00 o'clock in the morning and see?
2:00 in the morning. I mean, we currently now-
No, but I mean, when the time period is up, do you go and see if people are still where they're not supposed to be?
Yeah, absolutely. We receive, both our officers contact homeless people throughout their shift, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. So, you know, there's this misunderstanding that, like, law enforcement has this antagonistic relationship with law enforcement, or with homeless persons. Our 200-plus homeless persons, our two liaison officers could recite their names, they deal with them every day on a daily basis. So they get a lot of cooperation from them. So I can't actually think of a, I think I kind of understand where you're going, like, you know, at 4:00 in the morning, you have this altercation with these officers, here's this person refusing to-
Well, I was thinking more from the standpoint of what we're putting your people through in enforcing this. I am also thinking about the person involved. I think it's very sad that we have people in that situation. I mean, seems like police officers are supposed to have every talent in the world to deal with all these real-world situations, and I'm sure, I'm sure with your leadership, they have a good attitude to do it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Bill LaPeña?
Mayor McCoy, quick question for the city attorney. So we mentioned sleeping bags would be okay, they couldn't have any tents or anything. What if someone is sleeping in their car on public property?
Right. So a person has the right to sleep on public property if there's no other place for them to go. I would imagine at 6:00 AM, however, a police officer or city staff or a public official can wake them up and advise them that they can't sleep on public property past 6:00 AM. Anything else to add?
No, I think that's it. And remember, Boise and other areas have updated their laws before us, and I have not heard any reports from other chiefs of police of major altercations with folks. It's 6:00, it's time to get up and move. Everybody's going to work, it's time for you to move also.
Mayor Protem, Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one other thing on clarification for private property owners, particularly business owners. Describe for me, under the new ordinance, the process that a business owner would go through to deal with indigents or homeless people on their property that they perceive to be disrupting their business.
Okay, absolutely. So with the changes and the policing models that are being used that are considered best practices, a private property owner that owns, let's say, a mall, or even a couple businesses in any one of our business districts, they can, are free, with this assisting us, they're free to post on their property and their storefronts that the business is closed. So businesses closed at 10:00 at night, there is no known business open on that property, and they can leave a letter on record with us at the police department and post it, and some businesses are already working with us on this on a trial basis, post in their front of their window that anybody on the property, it is private property, and there's no business open, thus you're trespassing, and we'll be able to enforce the code then.
Okay. And could the business owner also go to court, get a restraining order, or something along those lines?
Yes, that's exactly it. So once the, let's say a person refuses to leave, under trespass laws, it gets really complicated in California. But under trespass laws, they have to tell the police officer that they are refusing to leave. It's just a nuance of the law. So the officer gets there and they say that they're not leaving. At that time, they could be cited or arrested. Or let's say they do leave, they comply with the business owner, and the business owner's had a repetitive problem with a person sleeping on their property and violating their private property rights. We document those incidents, we provide that information to the business owner. They take it down to the State Superior Court in Ventura, and they file for a civil restraining order, like people get if you had an employee that you fired that's not allowed on your property anymore. I think that's a good representation of what it would be similar to. They get the order, and that's a state order for the person to stay away from that property. Those do get issued, and now that is completely enforceable by any peace officer, any time of day. So that person is not allowed back on that private property, and we do get those. And this increases that ability for us to work with the private property owner and help them get through the civil process down at Ventura.
All right. Good, Chief. I'm glad to hear that. I am concerned about our local businesses and the effect that this has, and I'm concerned about the patrons to the local businesses. So I'm glad to see that you've got some enforcement powers there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Looks like our media left. They don't have the staying power of all you folks. Well done. We're gonna, oh, well, I meant, I meant the video side of it. I got you. Becca, come on, you guys never go. You're faithful, and so is the star. Hey, Mike. All right, we are now going to public comments, and you have five minutes each, but you don't have to use them all. Angeline Krolnick, you'll be first, and then Siam Roberts will be after Angeline. I'm sorry, it'll be Angeline, then Karen Ralston. I'm sorry about that. Thanks for coming out tonight. I know this is of concern to everybody, and I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you. I don't live in the Thousand Oaks area, but I do patronize. I have family members, and Mike Harris, I get the Ventura County star on my phone, and I greatly appreciate your community. First of all, I'd like to commend your city council and your chief of police. I think you're doing a wonderful, wonderful job, and I'm taking lots of notes because I want to bring it back to the San Fernando Valley, because you're our icon. I need to bring that back to us to save the other side of the world.
You can use all five minutes. I'm loving your presentation.
Thank you. I greatly appreciate it. First of all, I'd like to bring to your attention, there's a YouTube video out there called "Seattle is Dying," and it's how the homeless are taking over Seattle. And it's absolutely appalling. I mean, it's along state properties, your freeways. One lady filed 599 theft reports. The homeless come in, your store, your clothing store, take the stuff and they run with it. Out of the 599 reports that she filed, only eight were prosecuted. The city police, or their hands are tied, and I commend your officer, because being a sheriff and that, it's a lot of work. The other city that has stepped up is Rhode Island. They have intervention, prevention, counseling, and jobs, and that's what we need. The city of Los Angeles thinks we can just give housing, because I live near the Sepulveda VA. I've been there 34 years. We were Sepulveda, now we're North Hills West, and it's a great community. I brought my neighbor out, because we're constantly fighting. We feel like the Two Women Band on our street. But we are the last of the Mohicans, as we say, because a third of an acre agriculture, we're the last of the last. And I read in your paper about what you're doing out here, and I commend you, because you don't want to get out of hand like the city of Los Angeles does. I mean, it's appalling. I had to call Sacramento Caltrans, because I live near the 405 freeway, to have them post on three streets that are in my neighborhood, no trespassing, because without it being posted, we couldn't arrest. I had to file with Devonshire Police Department, because I'm not on the elite side. I'm near the freeway, but I'm not Chatsworth, Grenada Hills, or Porter Ranch. I'm sorry, but I'm gonna be point-blank. And we had to file with the police department, no trespassing, because I had a homeless man come into my property in October, with his motorhome, no plates. He sold $1,000 worth of water. Department of Water and Power told me, too bad, make me $200 a week every month's payments. That's on top of our electric bill. It's a lot of money. And then he came back two more times. The city says, oh, we'll change out your water meter. I had no proof, just except for my bill. And they're allowing this, and I don't want to see your community do this, and I want to take all your information to bring it to my community and to help amend it, because it's just getting out of hand. But you're smart, you're nipping it in the bud before it happens. Like Portland, I'm sorry, Seattle had said, 100% of the homeless, it's drugs, and we see it, the valley, it's methadone, it's heroin. They live underneath the freeways. We get the 72 hours that you give, soon as I have sanitation clean, and I take pictures of this, they're back in five minutes. My husband and I spend four hours every weekend cleaning our streets. We go behind Caltrans side, and it takes me eight hours to clean the weeds. It took me six months fighting the state of Sacramento, Sacramento, to clean six-foot-high weeds on Caltrans side. And that was only behind my house they would clean. And it's just out of control, and I commend you for what you're doing here. Like I said, I want to take the information back to my community and save it. And thank you. You're wonderful.
Angeline, thank you, dear. Karen Ralston, are you here? And then following Karen will be Siam. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you. Well, I haven't really had much of a chance to prepare too much, but I'm really upset about this. I'm concerned of what's gonna happen to our Thousand Oaks. I have a couple experiences that I can tell you, just from my nephew, used to live in Seattle. He wanted to leave, move out of California, and move to a different city where it was cheaper for him to live, and their parks were so full of needles that were unused, or used, used needles, that it was so bad. There were motorhomes in their neighborhood, the parks were full of homeless alcoholic drug people. They couldn't even go in the park. So they moved. They moved because of the homeless, and they moved here. And I've always been very concerned that this could happen to our neighborhood and our city, and I'm very, very concerned that there'll be more homeless that'll come here, because they're gonna find out, oh, now they can sleep between the hours that were specified. I'm very concerned about what's gonna happen in our neighborhoods. We have a homeless lady that lives in our park. She's been there for months, at a month. She sleeps there overnight. She has her suitcases there, and it's her park. The police don't take, make, remove her. She just lives there. And we try to deal with it okay, but just the other day, I saw her defecating at the corner of, near my house. You know, she has to go to the bathroom, so, you know, so now we get to clean it up, and that concerns me. So this is just one lady. What about if we have, you know, more, you know, five or six or seven or 10? And then the other thing that concerns me about, oh, we're gonna make sure that we monitor the timeframe, you know, that they're out by 6:00. Well, what happens if you want to take a nap at 2:00? They're just taking a nap in front of a business at 2:00. They're just taking a nap. Is that not okay? It kind of sounds like it's not okay, but how do you monitor that? How did the police monitor the, if everything was so nicely clear-cut and easy to handle, how come all the other, you got Seattle that's out of control, you got, I mean, I'm concerned that we're gonna be able to keep it under control, and I'm also concerned that we're gonna have a whole lot of more people coming to Thousand Oaks, and it's gonna be really difficult on our businesses, on the people that live here. I just have a whole lot of concerns about this. So that's really all I have to say at this point.
Thank you, Karen. Siam or Sam? And then following Sam or Siam, I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure that out. Okay, Siam, will be Nick Pavich. Hello?
Hi, my name is Sia Roberts, and I'm a resident here. My, oh, I see, you spelled my name wrong, that's why.
I'm sorry. I just go off what they give me.
My house backs to a park, and I'm wondering about a park being city-owned. You know, I moved here from Woodland Hills last year because of the, one of the major reasons was because of the growing drug addict transient issue. We had people under the freeways, at the parks, leaving needles, and as much as they tried to enforce the, in LA, you can have a tent, no tents pitched after whatever time, they never came down. There wasn't enough police to handle it. The homeless population grew out of control there, and they wouldn't leave. You know, they would, we'd have, we spent so much money on sanitation, cleaning it up, and then the next day, they were back. Sometimes even a couple hours later. I mean, if you go look under Topanga, they had a cleanup today, and it's back. And it became a waste of resources. And I also wanted to ask, in terms of no shelters being available, does that include people who refuse to go to shelter? Because I've done homeless outreach myself. I participated in neighborhood council when I was in LA County, and they, every single person that we offered help to refused, every single one. So most of them were either mentally ill or on drugs, or didn't want, or didn't want to live by the rules. So I'm wondering how that's gonna come into play when they're allowed to sleep in a public space if there's no shelter available. Well, what if they're offered shelter and they refuse? Does that count as shelter not being available if they're an addict and not allowed in a shelter? How are we gonna control at a park, even if they leave at 6:00, even if, and that's a big if, they leave at 6:00 AM, and they leave behind needles? Where are they gonna go to the bathroom? The bathrooms get locked up at night. You know, it's a huge public safety issue, and I just don't want to see it grow out of control like it did in LA with the RVs and the tents, and I mean, give them an inch and they're gonna take a mile. I'm telling you from experience, it grew out of control, and I don't want to see that happen here. Otherwise, I mean, I don't know why I moved here. You know, anyways, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Roberts, at the end of the comments, the chief will answer your questions, if that's okay, if you want to stick around.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Nick, welcome?
Hi, my name is Nick Pavich. I've been a resident for Thousand Oaks for 31 years. I'm against this homeless population we're having, but I think you need to take it one step further. I think you should have designated areas where these homeless are, have toilets, have trash pickup where it's easy to handle. If you get them spread out from any park, you don't know what they're doing at the park, and where they're leaving their trash, or where they're going to the bathroom, and that's not fair to them. And this homeless problem right now is gonna get worse, because our economy's great now, but what happens when it goes down? There's gonna be a lot more people homeless. So we really, we really need to help these people, because like she was mentioning, they're involved with drugs, and it's a serious problem. And I mean, you need to address it. You know, we're talking about it, what the police are gonna do and how they move them, but they should have an area where they go to, so we don't, our kids don't go there. If our young grandkids or children go into these parks, you don't know what they're gonna find there, and it's not fair. It's not fair to them. So we really need to take care of this issue. You guys gotta really get down to it and address it further. I know you're trying to protect this, protect yourself against lawsuits, but even so, we need to get further into it. Just for instance, the police, you know, you have to have, if somebody comes- Just for instance, the police, you know, you have to have, if somebody comes and solicits your house, they have to have a permit to solicit. And there's a lot of people out there soliciting. But you, how are you going to, how are you going to keep control of how many homeless people are out there? He said earlier, maybe 200, but you should probably have them registered. And then maybe you can help them if they're involved in drugs. You can direct them into a church or a facility. I mean, you, you need to take more of an active part in this thing, other than this saying, "Go to sleep in any public facility." Because that doesn't work. I mean, you need to have control over this thing. It's out, it's going to get out of control. Like you can see it. LA is having a major problem. And you don't want that to happen here. I know you don't want to bring more people in here, but it could, it's going to happen. That's my two cents.
Thank you, sir. We have Joe Galinas. And then following Mr. Galinas will be Timothy Corbett. Hello.
Good evening. Joe Galinas, resident of Thousand Oaks since 1991, except for about a year and a half. I have a question for the city attorney. You mentioned that homeless could sleep in a car. Can they also sleep in a van? Can they also sleep in a motorhome?
At the end of the comments, we'll be able to address your questions, sir.
Very good.
Thank you.
I have a lot more questions, I think, than, than comments. And if someone is caught camping, what is the citation or violation that's issued by the police department? I'd like to know that as well, too. And I want to know if anybody read the Wall Street Journal today? There's a huge article on the homeless population in Redwood City. Menlo Park, camper upon camper upon camper on city streets with raw sewage spilling everywhere and the police cannot contain it. How do you intend to manage this? Is every city library parking lot going to be open to the homeless in a motorhome? Is this parking structure next door going to be open for the homeless, whether they be in a motorhome or sleeping outside? What do you guys plan to do about this? Because you better dip into the bud right now because it's going to turn into LA, Seattle, Oakland, San Francisco. This is a major problem and you're unleashing everything. And I'd also like to know why the city feels compelled, after the Boise ruling, to be the first city in the county to open up their city ordinance and change it.
Okay, Timothy Corbett.
Folks, what are we doing? I mean, really, what are we doing? It's, it's out of control. Have you been to the Valley lately, Mayor? I'm doing a project in North Hollywood. It's a war zone. Okay? It took me 50 minutes to get from the 405 to Woodman Avenue down Van Owen Avenue. They're panhandling. They're sleeping underneath the overpasses. They're camping out. They leave their shopping carts everywhere when they get up in the morning and decide that it's time to get up, whenever it is. You're not going to be able to wake them up.
Would you address your questions to the council, please? That's the comments, that's public comments or requirements. Thank you.
So this is not a laughing matter. And I've watched you and her laugh four times tonight. What are you laughing about? This is serious stuff, Mayor. Okay? You're about to throw our city into the dumpster. And I'm not happy about it. And I'm sure a lot of people aren't happy about it. I'm a compassionate person as far as I can be. But when people come in and infringe on what I've tried to build my entire life. I came from the projects of Patterson, New Jersey. You ever been to Patterson, New Jersey, Mayor? Long way from Patterson, New Jersey to my little castle in Thousand Oaks, California. And I live on Columbia Road. Little 1,800-square-foot house. Okay? I am not going to stand by and watch Thousand Oaks do what the city of LA and the whole, entire state of California has done because of the Ninth Circuit Court. Okay? Which we all know is out of control. There you go. What are you grinning about? You got that smirk on your face, Mr. Mayor. What's that smirk about?
Point of order, point of order. This violates our norms.
Excuse me?
We have a civil norm. You're not following it. I can smile.
What's my civil norm?
To be civil.
I am being civil.
Okay, keep going.
I'm asking you what the smirk is about on your face.
I can't comment. Keep going.
Okay. So my point is, do not let Thousand Oaks become like the city of LA, the San Fernando Valley. Okay? And I've watched it happen and it's increased, I've been here since '99, but it's increased drastically over the last seven years. And the fact that, okay, the Ninth Circuit Court, First Amendment, whatever it is, Second Amendment, whatever it is, and these guys' hands are handcuffed and, and everybody keeps implementing that, well, we can't do this, we can't do that. Well, you know what? I used to watch the cops pick up the panhandlers at the 101 going north in the morning, put them in the car. I'd go up to a project in Ventura. They'd drop them off at Rose Avenue, you know? They'd drop them off at McDonald's or Carl's Jr., whatever. Turn around and come back to Thousand Oaks. You know, do you want them living in your backyard, your front yard? How many, how many of you guys live in a gated community? Can I get a show of hands? No? Nobody's going to show me hands? Do you live in a gated community? You don't? Okay, good. Great.
1,600-square-foot house. Go ahead.
Excellent.
And if you want to get to know me, let's have lunch. Because you got a lot of comments about me and I'm happy to talk with you.
I think that'd be great.
Anytime.
Give me a holler. You got my number.
Yeah, I will.
Don't let this happen. I'm telling you, like the lady said, she's from Woodland Hills. I grew up in the Valley. It was a great place to grow up. Now it's a war zone. If you give them an inch, they'll take a mile. And it's going to be never-ending. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Thank you, everybody, for your public comments. I know it's a passionate issue. So we're going to go to Ms. Noonan. She'll answer some of your questions. And then we'll have Chief Hagel share as well.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. Couple of things to just clarify here. The Boise case applies to every state in every, every city in nine states. California, Arizona, Hawaii, Nevada, Oregon, Washington.
Alaska.
And Alaska. This case applies to all of those cities. So as it stands today, for any city in those nine states who have not amended their camping or sleeping ordinance pursuant to Boise, they likely will not be able to enforce it. And in fact, it's my understanding that most cities are not enforcing their camping or sleeping ordinance because of the Boise case. Regardless of what it says on the books, they're not enforcing it. The issues that Seattle, Los Angeles, San Francisco are facing cannot be compared to what the city of Thousand Oaks is looking at. We've done demographics, we've done counts. We have, how many homeless, homeless people?
271.
About 271 homeless people. So what the city has done is they prioritize, it's actually one of the, the goals, the number one, top 10 priority in the city, to address homelessness issues because we recognize the quality of life that our residents demand. So some of the things we've done is we've created an ad hoc homelessness committee. That's Councilmember Bill De La Peña and Council, and Mayor McCoy are a part of. We meet regularly with nonprofit partners to try to address the social services aspects of homelessness. What this ordinance does, it actually strengthens our ability to regulate the sleeping and camping in the city. There's been a lot of comparisons tonight with respect to Los Angeles. So for those of you who are not aware, the city of Los Angeles has various ordinances and they've adopted them for decades on sleeping and camping. And every single one of those have been challenged by either the ACLU or some other nonprofit organization that supports homelessness services. In 2007, the city of Los Angeles entered into a settlement agreement with the ACLU where it's my understanding that they no longer enforce their camping or sleeping ordinances because of that settlement agreement. So the difference between Los Angeles and Thousand Oaks is that the city will actually be able to enforce our camping and sleeping ordinances as opposed to Los Angeles. This is an additional tool to strengthen our abilities. Another question that was asked is, what if they don't want to go to a shelter?
Be quiet.
Another question that was asked is, what happens if a person says, "I don't want to go to a shelter"? Well, then by definition, they don't qualify for the protected right to sleep. Because in order to sleep on public property, they have, there has to be no reasonable place for them to go. I think that our police chief also has some additional comments and follow-up.
Yes, I do. I'll start with the second question for a homeless person sleeping in the park. For the person that had that question, talking about a specific homeless person in their neighborhood, we have two full-time officers that deal with vulnerable persons, homeless populations, seven days a week, eight hours, 12 hours a day. They deal with them. I'm not joking when I could tell you that these two officers almost could probably recite the names of all 271 persons. That's how much they deal with them. If you will contact me, leave the name of the park that you were talking about, that there's a homeless person there. I'll get those officers out there tomorrow. We'll make contact, offer up our services, see what we can do to both help them out and the impacts that they have on your community there. For the next, the next one was a perfect example of the gal that was here from Los Angeles talks about the issue with the Caltrans property. By enforcing and making this law, you are making it constitutionally correct. And I'll give you an example. If we don't update our law, folks, and make it comply with the Constitution, the council is just trying to make us comply with the US Constitution. If we do this, that allows us the authority to make contact with persons who are trespassing, who are sleeping in the middle of the day, out in a park and have their sleeping bag there in the park. We have a legal reason to do it. Under case law with the Ninth Circuit Court decision in September, we don't have that probable cause, that reason to go up to the person. And let's say it goes south and all of a sudden there's a fight and the officer is in contact and the fight's on. The court's going to say, "We get it. You shouldn't fight with a police officer." Officer, why were you talking to the person? The law was unconstitutional, thus the arrest is unconstitutional. By allowing this, this gives the enforcement wing of law enforcement in an innovative and progressive way in the city of Thousand Oaks. The next one was, for the first speaker, okay, the next one was about shelters available. And the question was, if the person refuses to go to the shelter, do they have to go? The answer is, yes, they have to go. Now, there's caveats with everything, right? Everything starts with yes, and then here's the caveats. The shelter has to be open, has to be available, and a reasonable distance. And it would take a long time here to explain all the minutia of that. I'm happy to have sidebars outside on that. But you cannot expect a person in Thousand Oaks at, you know, 9:00 at night that says, "I'm not going to go to the shelter," and the only shelter open is in Ventura. The courts have held that the shelter has to be a reasonable amount of distance for that person to walk and get to or to take public transportation. So you, you have to have a shelter open in your community before you can enforce that. So the question is, can you enforce if someone refuses to go to the shelter? Yes, we can. And we have shelters in the Caneo Valley that are open through the winter months, from December through April. If the person refuses to go to the shelter, then they can be cited or arrested for the violation. The other, the other question by the gentleman was about sleeping in vans, homeless in cars and such. This ordinance applies to sleeping in public places with accoutrements such as sleeping bags, blankets and such, and camping, camping defined such as in tents. This, this ordinance is not an ordinance that is designed about persons sleeping in cars. So that's really important. Now, the whole topic of people sleeping in cars, which I don't know the statewide average, but is, is somewhere in the 20% range for homeless, for people sleeping in cars, is not affected by this law right here. So that's really important. And then the final question was, what is the fine and what's the legal application of this law? Well, it's a misdemeanor. And if you're violating this law, now that it's legal, if this gets approved by the council and is legal, then we actually have a right to issue a citation or physically arrest the person. Either one of those. We're talking arrest, booking at jail, or issue them a citation. And that's up to the discretion of the officer.
Mayor, if I can just address one of the comments that came from a member of the public this evening. And it was regarding taking an active role in providing assistance for persons experiencing homelessness and somehow registering them if they are currently here in the community. And I just wanted to make a note that the Ventura County Continuum of Care utilizes a coordinated entry system called Pathways to Home. This system allows participating agencies to receive referrals to help those persons experiencing homelessness needed to move them in and out of a state of homelessness as quickly as possible. So instead of jumping around from service provider to service provider, there's one point of entry so that they have access to services and programs that are needed. Just last year, we had a local agency that was able to house 66 persons as a result of utilizing this system. And then lastly, I'll just close with that the vulnerable population officers that Chief Hagel mentioned, they are, they actually work in conjunction with these service providers. So they're, the social service providers are out in the field with a police officer. So it's not only, you know, dealing with homelessness from an enforcement perspective, but it's also connecting them with the services needed to move them out of the state of homelessness.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Council discussion, Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Thank you, Mayor McCoy.
Oh, wait, wait, excuse me. It is a public hearing. We, we close the public hearing?
I had a question still.
It'll come following.
The question is clarification regarding sleeping in a car in a public space. I, it seems, there seem to be two different answers. If you could clarify that. One of the, two.
You go first. No, I'll go first. You go first.
Okay, all right. So the ordinance, the amendments to the ordinance allow sleeping. Doesn't allow camping. Doesn't allow living. Doesn't allow accessory property on the, on, on the property. That's what this ordinance pertains to, is sleeping, the act of sleeping.
Yes, and I'll piggyback on that. Two different points. One is, and thank you for that question because you just made me realize what I should, a real important point to clarify. This does not allow someone to sleep in their car on private property open to public access. So our malls, our shopping centers, our business centers, again, by allowing us the authority, we're giving those private properties greater rights to say, "No sleeping in your vehicles on our property also." So that's an important point that you just brought up about cars. This does not allow anyone to sleep in a car on private property or private property open to public access.
So we have a parking lot down here, so nobody can park on the municipal parking lot?
Okay, so I was speaking of private property. Now we're talking public property. And sleeping in cars has fallen, trying to phrase this correctly, has fallen under the Ninth Circuit Court and local, or correction, state of California decisions, particularly in the Los Angeles Basin area, cases in Santa Monica and Los Angeles, Venice area, about people sleeping inside of their cars. And so ordinance, local ordinances over the last two years have been up in the air about persons sleeping in cars. There's pretty much just been a moratorium with most police agencies, including us, to take sleeping in cars on a case-by-case basis because local ordinances have been in a real gray zone of being constitutionally viable. And I'll let the city attorney kind of continue on with that.
Right. It comes from the city of Los Angeles who adopted an ordinance to prohibit sleeping in cars. The court found, and Felicia, you can correct me if I'm wrong because I know you read the case. The court concluded that the way that the sleeping in cars ordinance was drafted was overly broad because it did not distinguish between living in the car with various personal property versus the act of sleeping in the car. So is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. I also wanted to-
I also wanted to mention that had Thousand Oaks a homeless shelter, a real homeless shelter, those people sleeping in public spaces overnight would be sent over there. But Thousand Oaks does not have a homeless shelter because so many people don't want a homeless shelter in this town.
Yes, that's correct.
No other questions? Well, that closes the hearing. Council discussion. Mayor Protem, Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very glad you all came down here to speak to us tonight. Very glad indeed. And it's pretty much what I suspected. I've lived here for 42 years. I live in a regular neighborhood, not gated. And I share the same fears and concerns that you do. I see what's happening in Seattle, and Santa Monica, and Los Angeles. I own a condominium in Santa Barbara that I just bought recently. I don't know how many of you have been to State Street in Santa Barbara lately, but it's out of control there. And it's a beautiful city that's being marred by this problem. And it's not going to happen here, as far as I'm concerned. It's not going to happen here. You know, there's a social side to it, and I get that. But homelessness is a big concept that doesn't necessarily include vagrancy and indigence and the type of people that are not homeless per se because of some social reason. Yes, we have Lutheran Social Services. Yes, we have churches. And yes, we're going to try to deal with it on the social side. But the enforcement side is very important, and that's what we're going to try to do tonight. Yes, we have to comply with this Boise law by some judge who decided to do a little social engineering that I don't particularly agree with, but the law's the law. But we're going to take that as a plus and strengthen the laws that we have. Because I don't want to see tents on our sidewalks. I don't want to see people pushing shopping carts. I don't want to see people sleeping in vans and RVs in this beautiful city. And I want you to know that, putting aside all the legalities. I live here, too. It's a beautiful town. Yes, we have some homeless people. We're going to continue to manage it as best we can, but I'm going to do everything in my power to not let it get out of hand, just the way you all have been talking about. So I guess I should make a motion. So I guess since I have the mic, I'll make the motion to approve this municipal code amendment. And I'm going to rely on Chief Hagel, because I know he believes in the enforcement side of this as well, to keep this city in order and to prevent what's happening in other cities happening to our beautiful town. And I mean it. So I'll make that motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Builda LePena?
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. I, of course, will join in agreement to the motion and wholeheartedly agree with what Mayor Protem Al Adams said. I haven't lived here in Thousand Oaks quite as long as you have, only 24 years. But nonetheless, it is my home, and there is no way that Thousand Oaks would look like Seattle, Los Angeles, San Francisco. Seattle is a city of 3.8 million people. San Francisco, 800,000. Los Angeles, 4 million. Thousand Oaks has 130,000. And the reason our homeless population has not grown as much as in other areas is because we have a top-notch police department where two police officers are actual social workers, basically. They have, they are social workers, helping the homeless. We have two wonderful organizations which help the homeless find housing, Harbor House and Lutheran Social Services, and there are many other nonprofits. But also very important for you to know is that many churches in our community open up their doors to provide a winter shelter for the homeless. The churches take care of food, dinner, breakfast, lunch. And really, our community comes together to help the homeless get back on their feet. The majority of homeless in the city of Thousand Oaks are from Thousand Oaks. They have fallen on hard times. They're mentally ill. They have become addicted to drugs because of the opioid crisis. They are from Thousand Oaks. Probably 98%, as the homeless experts have told us, are from Thousand Oaks. And because they are homegrown, we want to make sure that they get back on their feet. Mayor McCoy and I are still working on exactly how to make that happen. But we have to find a solution or to be able to manage this. But we can't do it if our community doesn't understand the root of the homeless problem. So tonight, we are helping law enforcement fix a problem, a longstanding problem. And in Chief Hagel, we have the best police chief anyone could wish for.
Mayor Protem, did you have another question? Or was your, you just? Well, I just wanted, Mr. Corbett left, and I could answer his question now. Yes, I've been to the Valley. I've also, in the last 30 days, been to the Tenderloin District in San Francisco. And I've also been to Skid Row. I've visited just the worst of the worst. So if you wonder if I have my mind wrapped around it, I do. If you think this is something that we want in our city, and you think that that's something I want, you don't understand. You don't know me. And you don't know the council. We're working diligently. And I appreciated the article in The Star. I thought it was very accurate. I did not like the headline. It created a firestorm on social media. And, folks, we're all citizens here. I live here. And to define me as living in a gated community, removed from the problem, my life has been involved in this completely. And so we're working diligently. We've put countless hours in. We've looked at the expanse of it. And I'm sure everybody thinks they've got a solution to it. But we're dealing with every aspect of legality that we're trying to understand as a city and be proactive in addressing what is an ever-increasing problem in the state. And their desire, plus the Federals, to usurp our local authority, and we're doing our best to fight it. And so that's why we've come up with this. I know it's a passionate issue. I don't think Mr. Corbett was angry with me. He's just upset about the issue. And I feel the same way about all of you. I appreciate you coming out here. I know your heart in relation to this, to the best of my ability. So thank you for taking the time. This is what local government's all about. And I just want to commend you all for coming out tonight, and I thank you. With that, oh, thank you. All right, Councilmember Jones.
I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilwoman Builda LePena for the hard work you're doing on this. It's very good of you. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Madam Clerk, will you, I guess we need a vote. Will you put the vote together? We have a motion.
The motion carries 5-0, and I do have an ordinance title to read into the record, an ordinance amending Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, Sections 5-8.08 and 5-8.09 of Title 5, Chapter 8, miscellaneous offenses regarding camping and sitting and standing in public places.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Folks, that was a little heavy. So we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back to the other item. So go use the restroom, stretch your legs.
All right, we shall resume. That brings us to item 9A. Allocation approval pre-screening initiation of general plan amendment and concurrent processing of residential project at 3801 Maurice Drive. We have Mark Towne, Community Development Director, speaking. And so, Mark, take it away.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight is the second discussion of a pre-screening request for property at 3801 Maurice Drive. The request, as you may recall, involves three basic components. One is a request to allocate 50 units of citywide residential capacity under the city's growth control measure E to the site. Second is to initiate a general plan amendment to change the land use for the subject property from commercial to high-density residential. And then finally, to allow concurrent processing of the entitlements and legislative requests such as zoning and a general plan amendment. A property, I think you've all been there. It is on the west side of Reno Road, immediately north of Maurice. You can see here in the southwest portion of the city, basically bracketed by Kimber Drive to the north and Lynn Road on the south. In terms of background, the previous review that you heard on this property or this project was back in February. And as, again, you may recall, that evening you chose to continue the action on the item until the applicant could provide additional outreach to neighboring residents. And since that time, the applicant has conducted four outreach meetings with three nearby homeowners' associations. And I'm sure they will talk about that in more detail when they speak tonight, but there's also a summary of the outreach in your packet tonight as well. So just, again, to reiterate, I think it's very important to recognize that where we're at tonight is, again, what we call pre-screening. This is for properties that are not entitled to the residential density that they are requesting. In this case, it's not residential at all, it's commercial. So the request has to go before you, and the result potentially is to take units out of the citywide Mejere pool and apply them to this property. Even if you did that tonight, I want to emphasize that this is really a green light, red light decision on your part whether the project even goes forward through the process or not. If you were to allow it to go through the process, it would proceed through these additional five steps that are outlined on this slide. The next step would be a pre-application review. That's a deep dive into the technical aspects of the project with multiple departments and agencies, including fire and police. That often results in the project being refined, and then that is the subject of the formal application, as shown here. Once that formal application is received by the city, then we conduct an environmental analysis of the project. When I say "we," that's staff coordinating and outside consultant to do it under our direction. And then often that may result in a further refinement or change to the project before it gets to Planning Commission. And then, of course, Planning Commission can modify the project further before it comes back all the way to you. So we're at the very first step in this process. A lot of room here for the project, if you allow it to go forward, to be further refined. So now, just looking at an aerial photograph of the site, again, northwest corner of Maurice and Reno, next to the Albertsons' store, vacant lot, approximately 1.7 acres in size. So this is the current land, general plan land use, sort of mosaic in this area. As you can see, the subject property is red, that denotes commercial. It's surrounded on the other three sides by residential. You can see medium density to the west and south, and low density to the east. The proposed land use for this property is high-density, as shown in this image, which would be the land use category that requires the allocation of 50 units maximum to the site. I should also say that the zoning right now is neighborhood commercial, C1. And so that would probably change if you allow it to go forward to residential plan development, which is the appropriate zoning category for high-density residential. So again, the allocation of units that's being requested are 50 units. Right now, there's a citywide pool of units under Mejere that's 1,380. So this request would take about 4% of that pool, leaving about, leaving 1,330 units for potential allocation elsewhere in the city. So now we begin to talk about the project design. And this is the same design that you saw at the first pre-screen. The applicant has not changed the design since then. And so, again, at the risk of repeating myself a bit, it has been a few months, but recall that here we're looking, basically west is to the north here. This is Reno and Maurice, and this is the Albertsons' market. So what's being proposed is an apartment building right here. That would contain 37 units adjacent to the Albertsons'. And then these four buildings are all condominiums. There'd be two units here, two units here, three here, and three here, for a total of 10 condominiums. The design concept, in addition to what I just mentioned, contains an underground parking level which would access here off this shared driveway, which also provides access to the back of the center, with underground parking here, and then surface parking elsewhere here, here, and then, of course, parking underneath each one of the condominiums. The design concept right now, again, conceptually calls for a mix of two- and three-story buildings, with two-story buildings being here on the east side, next to Reno Road, Building D, as shown in this concept. Building C is a mix of two stories on the east, and then the westerly portion of Building C is three stories. Buildings B and B are both three stories, as is the apartment building in the back, Building A. And as you can see, there are common recreational amenities proposed, a pool and spa complex here and a play area over next to Reno Road. So when we look at requests like this, we look at four fundamental areas. One is the suitability of the site for the proposed use and density, segments design quality, provision of Reno units, that stands for regional housing needs allocation. And that's basically a state mandate, I'll talk about in a moment. And then community benefits. What does the project bring to the city above and beyond the normal provision of housing in this case? So in terms of suitability of the site, the primary points I wanted to make here, first of all, when I look at the property, it seems to me that residential is a more appropriate use for that site than commercial as it is today. There's residential on three sides, this area. In terms of compatibility with the homes across the street, opposite the property on Maurice Drive, it would seem to be a better fit than a commercial use in terms of actual long-term land use. It's, as I think everybody recognizes here tonight, it's within walking distance, obviously, to commercial, but also to parks, public open space to the south and to the east, and even to bus stops in the area. I mean, it would add another element to the amount of housing in the area and to the variety of housing by injecting a small apartment option for residents in the area as well as condominiums. It, finally, as noted in your packet tonight, pursuant to a memo from the Public Works Department, the proposed use for residential purposes would be roughly 30% of the estimated traffic resulting from commercial uses on the property. So traffic is expected to be significantly less. In terms of the design quality, and then moving on to the second of those four areas that we examine, in this case, the site-
Mark, I'm sorry, would you repeat that again? The traffic aspect?
Yes. So there's a memo from our Public Works Department in your packet tonight. Staff has conducted an initial assessment of traffic, and the traffic from a commercial use would be significantly higher than residential use. The residential use would be roughly 30% of the commercial use. And I'm referring to attachment number eight in your packet. There's a table that looks at commercial use, residential use, and the net change between the two. So I'm looking at Table 3 in Attachment 8 to, as a source for those numbers.
Thank you.
In terms of the site plan, the layout is consistent with our residential plan development space allocation formula, we call it. We look at building footprint, paved area, and open space, and it's consistent with that formula. As I mentioned, there are common recreational areas. And finally, the parking supply, as proposed, is significantly higher than what is required. 75 parking spaces are required. The applicant is providing 89 for a 14-space buffer above what's required. So now we are looking at a cross-section to show the relationship between the apartment building to the Albertsons', so we're actually looking west here, as if we were on the east side of Reno Road. And so the apartment building is here, you can see the three stories. It rises to a height of 35 feet in this concept. Albertsons' is to the right. It ranges from about 22 feet to 38 feet in height. The idea here was to provide a height that was comparable, albeit not exactly, but comparable to the height of Albertsons'. And also, here you can see the underground parking structure, underground parking level, I should say, beneath the apartment buildings. Again, on the topic of design quality, now we're shifting more to architecture from the site plan. Staff looked at this and feels that the architecture, in terms of the concept, is appropriate. It's a well-articulated design, it has multiple roofline elements and heights, and it does provide a height transition to the Albertsons' behind. If we look at these images, this one in the upper left, this is looking at the apartment building with, looking eastbound, so this is what would be considered the left side. This is the entrance to the parking level under the building. And now, if we go over to Reno Road and we're looking back westerly, this is the apartment building as it would look from Reno, three stories again. This middle elevation, this is as if there were no condominiums there, and you're looking at the apartment building from Maurice Drive, again, showing the full three stories. And then at the bottom, this shows the height relationship between the project overall and, again, the Albertsons' to the right. So now we're looking westbound, we're on the other side of Reno, this is Maurice Drive. And if you sort of zoom in here, you can see these are the two-story condominiums facing Reno. This is the next building that is a combination of two and three stories, and then the concept is three stories for those other two buildings heading to the west. This is the apartment building, which would be largely screened from Maurice and partially screened from Reno, and then again, and then the Albertsons' market. Now, if we shift gears to the townhomes, again, two and three stories. If we look at this upper image, now we're looking north. So Reno Road is over here to the right, and you can see how they step from two stories to two and three stories to three and three stories. So these are three units here, three units here, two units here, and then two units over facing Reno Road. So this is the driveway on the west side of the shopping center that would provide access to the apartments, and this is the riparian area to the west. The lower image is the same as the one that we just saw in the private, in the previous image. As mentioned here, currently in this concept, there's some minor setback deviations, but those may be modified or disappear if the project goes forward. So now we are looking at photo simulations of the site. This is the existing character of the site, again, looking northwest, Canale Mountain in the distance. The, I call it the Albertsons Shopping Center to the right for ease of reference. And this is what it would look like under this concept, again, early in the planning and design stage, but this is what it would look like. So again, these are the two-story townhomes next to Reno Road. And then this is the next building with a combination of two and then three-story elements, and then two, three-story elements proceeding over to the driveway that provides access to the back of the shopping center and to the apartments. In terms of their regional housing needs assessment, again, this is a state-mandated part of our housing element, part of the general plan, and basically it requires the city to provide housing in different income categories. In this case, the applicant is proposing five moderate-income units, which moderate is defined as between 80 and 120% of area median income. Basically, it means for a family of four, the maximum income would be about $115,000. However, I should note that currently, the need in terms of meeting our Reno requirements under state requirements is a total of 56 low-income units and 64 very low-income units. We actually do not need moderate-income units per se to meet our Reno requirement, and so I put that out there for council consideration. Then finally, community benefits. As I mentioned earlier, I think residential is a more appropriate use for the property than commercial. It would have, it would be more compatible with adjacent land uses. It also would provide additional housing stock and options in the area. Again, currently, the applicant is proposing five affordable units. And then, this is not really a driving factor, but should mention it, that because the property is commercial, if it were to change to residential, then the commercial acreage would also be put into the, into the Mejere commercial pool, which is currently at about four acres and has been at that level for a number of years. So, again, going back to the idea that I laid out in that image, if council were to allocate units to this project, these are the next five steps. Pre-application, the applicant would be required to formal, file a formal application within 12 months. Then we would have environmental analysis conducted. Planning Commission would vet the project, and then it would come back to you for final action. It's coming back to you for final action because of the allocation and because they would be looking at the zone change and general plan amendment, both of which are legislative actions requiring your approval. So with that, staff is recommending that you allocate 50 units of citywide residential capacity to the project, with the caveat that the applicant must submit their formal application within a year, and to initiate the general plan amendment that I mentioned from- from commercial to high-density residential, and to allow concurrent processing of the entitlements, which is basically the brick-and-mortar component of the project with land use changes, which are the legislative. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Also, to my left is Kari Finley, Planning Division Manager, and who has also been working on this particular case. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Mayor Protem Adam?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Town, good report. Just want to talk to you a little bit about the pre-screening process that we're in this evening, which is the very preliminary beginning stages of this process if it goes forward to approve this building project. We haven't always had this pre-screening process, have we?
No. The pre-screening process came about to ensure that city council saw projects that required measury capacity early on in the process. If you can imagine, if we didn't have this step before us tonight, you wouldn't see the concept at all until it had gone fully through the environmental analysis, planning commission, and came back to you. So, this basically gives you, as the city council, an early read on a project. Again, tonight, just red light, green light to go through the process. Your action tonight, I should reiterate, does not denote final approval. This, if you opted to allow this project to go forward, you still, of course, have the right at the end of the process to approve or deny or conditionally approve, but there's no obligation to approve it at the end if you approve it to go forward tonight.
Yeah, and the pre-screening process, I think, was passed unanimously by the council in 2018, was it not?
Yes.
Yeah. And it does give the city council the ability to have, interject some ideas as to what they think about the project, and it's been met very favorably by the community as well as the building community, has it not?
Correct. So, if I may, so, at all pre-screenings, you have the ability to provide direction to an applicant. So, if there are concerns that you have tonight, if there's a certain element that you think is missing, this is a perfect opportunity to provide that direction to the applicant. Then, it really sets the stage for that review that I just, that I just outlined. And you have done that before, of course, with projects such as Pinecrest and others.
So, gives the council a chance to critique the project and add their thoughts, and we have not always passed projects in a pre-screen application, have we?
No. The project at 1850 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard was denied by city council.
Okay. And you mentioned some of the criteria that we use. We actually use even a greater amount of criteria that was portrayed tonight. It was a pretty exhaustive list of qualifications that we're looking for, is it not?
That's correct, and I should also note that, in the past, before the pre-screening process, for projects that we're looking at, at a general plan amendment, for instance, we would just provide land use data. You didn't have a concept to react to. Now, through the pre-screening process, you have these basic plans, architecture, site plan, viewshed renderings, again, so that you see the whole proposal and have a much better idea about what is being proposed, and then can make, obviously, a more informed decision early on in the process.
Yes, okay. Just switching gears here, the current zoning on the property is commercial, correct?
Yes.
So, the owner could theoretically build what?
So, the current zoning is C1, which is neighborhood, commercial, just a few of the uses that could occur there, veterinary office, restaurant, dance schools. Dance schools, martial arts studios, medical offices, dental offices, banks, professional offices, retail stores, pet shops, and then there are special-use permits that would be required for other uses, such as a service station, live entertainment health clubs, daycare center. So, depend, there's different permit types that would be required, but there's a variety of commercial uses that could occur on the site.
Yeah, I read somewhere, and there was a possibility of a 25,000-square-foot retail center that was bandied about.
That's a size estimate that was provided by the applicant and that we used for the traffic analysis.
Okay. And then, the traffic analysis says that commercial would generate roughly three times the traffic that a residential would.
Correct.
Okay. And just one more quick thing on Reno, which stands for Regional Housing Needs Assessment. That's one of the council priorities, that we meet the shortfalls in our Reno assessment. And as you mentioned, we have a lot of moderate-income housing, but we're very low on the, very low and low income, correct?
Correct. And that's a mandate from the state that basically says that the city, all cities have to provide the capacity for different income categories. In this case, the applicant is currently proposing five units, moderate income. You can provide direction if you want to, to go in a different direction. Again, we're very early in the process. That's the current proposal.
And interestingly enough, I have the chart here in front of me. The income limits for two people in a very-low-income housing are $41,000 a year, and for two people in a lower-income housing are $60,000, $65,000 a year, it's higher than you would think.
The Ventura County median income for a family of four is $96,000, so it's pretty significant, but it's really up to you if you would like to go in that direction.
All right, thanks, Mr. Town.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to ask the planning director, is that your title, planning director?
Community Development Director.
Things get more impressive all the time around here. I was just, I've gotten a number of letters and emails relative to the project, and one letter says that their homeowners' association warned them against subterranean parking because of potential damage to homes across the street. Is there any, do you have any idea what that means, or?
I did read that letter. I'm not entirely sure what that means, because any project that proposes development, or especially subterranean, parking requires full geotechnical analysis, soils analysis, that would all have to be fully vetted. So, I'm not aware of anything in particular at this point, but again, through the environmental analysis process, all of these topics, including traffic, are more fully evaluated by experts in those fields.
He makes several points, but one other point I'd like to ask you, he says that this should require traffic signals at the corner of Maurice and Reno. Is that, was some study done of that?
That would be evaluated during the environmental analysis.
Oh, that hasn't been done yet?
No.
And this list of things that you asked the developer if he would do, and obviously, he doesn't have any extra land to donate on this site, I would think. Are there any off-site infrastructure improvements that would be appropriate?
At this time, I'm not aware of any. In terms of community benefit, they may be further identified as we proceed, if we proceed, particularly by Public Works.
But that's something that could be decided later if we give it the green light-
Correct.
-to go forward.
This project would require a development agreement, and that could be folded into that agreement.
I see, so we have a lot of options, haven't we? Will a developer commit to designing and constructing new buildings to exceed green building standards? What, I don't, I haven't been here long enough to know what green building standards are.
So, the state of California has a green building code, and it specifies certain energy efficiency thresholds. That question is really whether the applicant will go above and beyond those standards. And at this point, I would leave it up to the applicant to answer that, but it's something, again, if you want to provide direction tonight, you could certainly do that.
Do we have to provide it tonight, or could we do it at a later stage, if I understand it better later?
You can do it at a later stage as well.
Okay. I think that's about it. There was one other thing that was mentioned here. I guess I can, I presume the developer will answer some of these questions in his presentation, so I'll wait for that. Thank you.
And if you think of it, it'll come back to you. Councilmember Angler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question on, there's been some controversy, I think, as we all have received a lot of letters, trying to determine the traffic impacts of the developments there, commercial versus residential. Do you determine that by some schedule, or do you determine it by a combination of a schedule and experience? How do you come about with that determination?
Well, the initial analysis for this project, again, this is very conceptual now, but based on that 25,000-square-foot footprint, Public Works looked at traffic in terms of both peak hour usage and also total daily trips. And on both counts, their initial analysis showed that a commercial use would result in significantly greater traffic. So, that's something, again, that will be further evaluated. I don't want to say that's the final analysis. It was conducted based on a concept, a size that was provided by the applicant. And in terms of that range of commercial uses that I mentioned, some generate more traffic than others, but on average, that was the conclusion by our Public Works traffic engineering staff, that residential use would result in less traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Mr. Town, a question. Would the zoning go into effect as far as a change if we were to consider evaluating and looking at the two projects? As the property owner currently has commercial zoning, and you're stating a higher traffic volume, if we move forward in looking at, because the last plan they came with, and they're going to have a lot of work to do, but if we see these two and evaluate the flow of traffic, tonight, any decision, is that going to change the zoning, or is this just?
No. First of all, for pre-screening requests, we normally don't do even an initial traffic analysis. We did that, Public Works did that because of concerns that we heard from the public at the first pre-screening discussion. So, it's normally not something we would do so early in the process. But that information, again, will be provided through the environmental document. It will be, again, evaluated and vetted by our planning commission, who will provide a recommendation to you for final action. And at that point, you'll have very detailed information in terms of traffic counts, the idea of a signal will be fully evaluated. Tonight, we wanted to provide that preliminary information because of what we heard at the first pre-screening request. We're trying to give you as much information as we can at this early point in the process to make a sound decision.
And I think, Mr. Town, Mayor McCoy's additional question on that was, there is no action tonight that is going to formally change the zoning on the property?
No, no, not at all. The zoning, the zone change decision won't be made until it comes back to you at the very end of the process. So, tonight, there's no, there's no change in zoning that would happen if you allow the project to go forward. There's no general plan change. It simply says, "We think that this project has sufficient merit to be considered and to go through the process." Again, the zone change, the general plan amendment, would not occur until the very end of the process if you chose to approve it at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Town. There doesn't appear to be any more questions from the council, so at this point, we're going to have the applicant speak. You have 15 minutes, then we're going to go to our public comments, and we have got a slew of folks speaking tonight. And by the way, thankful you're all here. It's going to be two minutes apiece, so do your best, and we're listening. And then, Mr. Cohen, you can present to us, and let's see what you have to say.
Thank you, Mayor Chuck Cohen, Thousand Oaks, representing the Cohen family, not mine, different Cohen. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Cohen, who is here this evening, and I are appreciative of your direction and willingness to continue the pre-screen matter to, tonight, due to our earlier inadequate outreach to the project neighbors. We thank staff for evaluating the concerns raised by oral and written neighbor testimony and for keeping this matter on track. Also, we appreciate the participation of the people in the neighborhood who took the time to meet with our representative, Mr. Tim Gallagher, to obtain a more accurate understanding of what is being proposed on this vacant lot, and what is the purpose of this hearing. Mr. Gallagher made those presentations, and he will follow me to explain his impressions derived from the four meetings detailed in Attachment Seven to your staff report, including one added meeting with residents that actually came to the property and did a Q and A on site. Again, I apologize for our earlier inadequate outreach. Having digested the input received during the outreach meetings, and in line with the early and preliminary nature of this pre-screen procedure, please know, for one thing, please know that we understand the pre-screen procedure and recognize that there is no commitment on the part of the council to allow this project to be, to approve this project prematurely. We know that we listened and evaluated the neighbor input finding that concerns voiced were due in part to our previous inadequate explanations and in part due to typical nearby resident perceptions about density and traffic. You have Attachment Number Eight, the recent traffic study and report of the city traffic engineer, which was done at the time that we continued this matter, and done at the behest of the city. That was a study to determine the relative impacts of what is being proposed in terms of a residential project versus the ability to go forward with the existing zoning for a commercial or retail project. So, that study included a consideration of cumulative traffic with what exists today plus what we're proposing, and that that study shows that it would not be an excessive amount of traffic, nor would it be any different than what is generally allowed in all those other city residential neighborhoods. The relatively minor number of units, and I emphasize that despite what you probably will hear from our neighbors, is not excessive considering that this lot originally contained three acres, which would calculate just north of medium density, or the same designation as applies to several of the adjoining properties to this site. It was reduced by 1.25 acres to the current 1.67 to contribute land to the flood channel and open space. City development standards account for the need for a fiscally sufficient number of dwellings in order to be able to provide a feasible project. Future occupants will find a quality of living comparable here with, the question was raised about, about green standards, and that's certainly part of the planning effort that will be made from the point of filing an application on through to the future public hearings. They will find that the people that do occupy these units, these are going to be very, very high-quality units, comparable to the living experience in the neighborhoods that are across Maurice Drive. You know that city processing requires months, a year probably, of continuing interaction with staff, project evaluation pursuant- with staff, project evaluation pursuant to the California Environmental Equality Act, and public hearings before the city, Planning Commission, and City Council. We are confident that the final proposed project will imperceptibly infill this ideally-located lot. We concur with the staff report and recommendations. We would only expand on a couple of staff findings, namely, this is the final lot of a larger property containing the Albertson Shopping Center and the land that was, that underlies the existing, some 250 homes in that general area. That area was land that was owned by the Cohen family and was subsequently approved and subdivided, including the improvement of the shopping center. It's fair to mention that before these homes and the center were constructed, the Cohen family dedicated and improved land for the flood control channel west of the center, added to the trees along the channel with screen views from the, of the project from homes west of the channel, installed the private drive, which also serves as public access to the center and allows for easier flow for the people up Maurice Drive to get in and out of that shopping center than having to go out to Reno Road, and gifted permanent open space to the community benefiting the neighborhood and the city. This project, previously, actually arose as a result of a lawsuit between the family and the city of Thousand Oaks and eventuated in a stipulated judgment. Among the terms of that judgment was to confer that there would be these requirements on the property to donate land for the channel, et cetera, et cetera. And the point being that those contributions of open space, extra trees, actually the provision for the flood control channel, which allows for the development of homes in that entire area, should also be credited as public benefits to this final lot. Finally, it is my understanding that Mr. Gallagher informed the neighbors that this lot has existing rights to build out approximately 25,000 square feet of commercial uses should this less invasive and less dense residential proposal not move forward. Earlier, Mr. Cohen canvassed his closest neighbors across Maurice Drive to find that the homes, that homes rather than commercial was the preferred use of this lot in the future. And it was on the basis of that that Mr. Cohen decided to come forward and start to work at least two years ago to start to put together the plan that is just in the incipient stage tonight to be allowed to at least progress through your planning process. Now I'm going to ask Mr. Gallagher to describe what he took away from the outreach meetings with the members of the community.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. After the last pre-screen, I was hired to reach out to the neighbors in the surrounding area to listen to their concerns. I conducted four outreach meetings in the neighborhood. On the evening of April 1st, at the Emmons Company, I met with the Twin Oaks Board, approximately 25 people. On April 10th, at the Gold Coast Management Office, I met with the Old Creek Canyon HOA Board, and there were about six people there. I was contacted by some members of that HOA who are not on the board, who were upset that they weren't invited to that meeting, so I conducted my own meeting with them out on the site of the proposal on April 23rd, about 40 to 50 people out there. People brought long chairs and their dogs and stuff. We had a pretty nice time that night. And then the next night, we met with the Brighton Lane HOA Board and members at the home of the HOA president, about 15 people. I started out each meeting with an apology to those folks that we had not done a better job of outreach to them previously. That was an oversight, should not have happened that way. I was not taking notes, but I could break down their feelings for you, something like this, and be pretty close. There were a significant number of people who want nothing at all to be built on the property. They want to stay where it is. There were a significant number who wanted it to stay commercial. There were a significant number who didn't object to residential but felt that the proposal was too dense. It would create some projects, some problems that I'll get to in a minute. And then there were a few brave souls in the meetings who said they actually liked the proposal, and a lot more who approached me later privately or an email and said that they liked it but didn't want to say so in front of their neighbors. To summarize the concerns of the neighbors, they feel like the increased population at the proposed site will make a bad parking and traffic situation even worse. They said that turning from Mauricio onto Reno is a real problem, and these increased traffic trips would exacerbate that. From a parking standpoint, they said that there are somewhere between three to 10 cars parked on Maurice most of the time. These are overflow parking from the Brighton Lane development, and they did not believe that the parking was adequate on our site, and they thought people who are going to be in this project would be parking out on the street as well. There was also a fair amount of concern about the ingress and egress to that service road that feeds the Albertson Shopping Center. They didn't think it was a good idea for people in the apartment building to be sharing that road with those trucks. Some residents were concerned about the heights of the buildings. There were various concerns about engineering, construction noise, dust, water, runoff, low-income people. I explained to the neighbors that my job was not to argue with them, but was instead to listen to their concerns, record them, and bring them back to the property owner. And the only time I argued was when we had a few people who made some unkind, untrue statements about low-income people and affordable housing, and I just, I couldn't let that pass without correcting it. I said that I understood that for many of them, this was the first time they'd been involved in a process like this, but it was fairly typical, the way this pre-screen process works. The property owner makes a proposal, the city staff looks at it, and then the neighbors get their chance to talk about it. And then it goes through a process of working with city staff. It comes before you, the council, and I encourage them to come here tonight to make their concerns known to you, and I told them that you actually do listen to what they have to say. And eventually, you decide to go forward with it or not, and if you decide to go forward with it, it is sort of a compromise or something that we all can agree on. Everyone knows that refinement is necessary, and tonight is not an approval of the project, but it is, we hope, a signal to move forward in the process with refinement and modification. Thanks very much.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's time for the council to be able to ask questions. If you both want to come up, there's some questions from the council. Councilmember Billy Lepenya, you had a question for?
Yes, thank you, Mayor McCoy. Good evening, I do have a question. You were here recently and asked that the item be pulled off the agenda so that you could do the outreach with the neighbors.
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing you.
You were here recently to, but pulled, asked that the item be pulled off the agenda so you could reach out to residents, to neighbors.
That's correct.
The project before us is, hasn't changed, and so I would like to know why the project, after consulting with neighbors, why changes were not implemented.
Because the, well, I attempted to explain that in my earlier remarks, but basically it's several-fold, one, we didn't actually hear a valid, useful reason to modify the I expected that little backlash, but the point being that the real concerns had to do with traffic and density. And that the fact is that we, the city itself took the initiative to look at the difference between a commercial use of the property and this residential proposal, and it found that the commercial use would actually produce three times the amount of traffic that this project did. So when you look at a project as small as, basically, it's 47 units with five units that qualify under the Reno requirements, but the point being that it's a small lot, it's a small property, it's not a, it's not a massive project in any sense. It offers a new entrance to Maurice Drive. All of these things left us in the, with a sense that what we had proposed, we did not hear any critique that would cause us to find reason at this time. Now, we're, you know, we have a long process to go through, but at this time, we didn't see a reason to modify the project based upon the input that we had received.
Did you do the?
Wait, wait, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Folks, you're going to get a chance to have your public comments. And one of the things that moved us last time you were all here was your civility. We get it, but please, you'll have your opportunity to speak, keep your comments in the gallery to yourselves, and we'll listen to you when you come to the microphone. Thank you, Councilmember.
Mr. Cohen, or perhaps Mr. Gallagher, did you have the information on the traffic study when you did do the outreach?
I'm not sure that we had that at that time. Yeah, Tom tells me we did, yes.
For the last two we did.
So you did share the fact?
The last two, last two meetings.
So you did share the results of the reduced traffic impacts?
Correct.
If you went ahead with residential rather than commercial?
Yes.
And how was that received?
Mr. Gallagher was there, it'd be better for him to respond.
I'm not, I would say it was not well-received. I think that the neighbors have a lot of concerns about traffic, the speed of traffic on Reno Road. They talked about a number of accidents that occurred in the area in recent months. And I don't, frankly, I don't think they gave much credibility to the city study.
Thank you.
And from what we understand, they had talked about multiple accidents, but what we've heard from your planning, your traffic department was that there was one accident that was unrelated to anything on this property.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
Excuse me, I'm not on here. Mr. Cohen, let me go through this list again of
Sure.
of things that I asked Mr. Towne. Would you be amenable to any off-site improvements in this six-months or a year process, whatever you're going to go through till we get the final, you know, proposal before us?
If they related to burdens that the project is in fact providing, causing, yes. But keep in mind, Councilman Jones, that there's already been a significant number of public benefits that have been conferred upon the community and the city as this entire super block was built out.
Yeah, it's hard for the people right now who have not lived there very long to appreciate something that was done 20 years ago.
What have you done for me lately? I understand that.
Yeah. What about green building standards? Do you know what they are? What does it mean?
We know that they relate to construction materials, they relate to the acoustical controls of the window, window materials and so on. Yes, we're looking, and that is part of the evolution of moving this through the planning process.
So you might be amenable to doing that if there was, say, a request for you to do it? Do you have any idea what the, these apartments would rent for, and the five that would be lower price?
I wish I could tell you that, Councilman Jones, but the reality is that we have a process that would take us at least probably the next year. It'll take a year to probably to do the final plans and drawings and get to consider. We're at least three, we're at least two and a half to three years out.
If I'm here a year from now, I'll
See what the market's going to be at that time.
I'll ask you that, okay. And do you know anything about this fear that the homeowners association has of some impact of the subterranean parking on their?
Well, you know, the city generally prefers to see subterranean parking on most projects because what it does is that it allows for more open space, allows for more landscaping, and it takes the surface parking out of sight.
Yeah, I understand what it does, but I don't
We haven't had, we have not had an experience with a fault failure as a result of doing any kind of, the amount of excavation is not significant enough, but that's going to be a part of the sequoia study as we go through this. There will be a geologist that'll have to make that determination.
Okay, that's all my questions. I have the impression that you would be amenable to some of these things in a later stage if
Correct.
if you go forward tonight.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Adam, or, excuse me, Mayor Protam Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, there's been a concern about parking as, from what you've been saying. So if I get this, so people are parking along Maurice Drive in front of the condominiums on the other side of the lot? Is that what's happening?
So, Councilman Adams, the concern for the neighbors was that along Maurice Drive?
Yes.
There are a number of cars parked there at any time of the day. The belief is that these are cars that are in the Brighton Lane association, but those cars, they have a stipulation in their homeowners association that they don't allow parking on the street, so cars come up to Maurice and park there, and as well as some, a few from the other neighborhoods as well. That was the concern of the neighbors.
So is there parking on both sides of the street?
Not sure it's allowed on the other side of the street. The neighbors, it's not, okay, it's not allowed on the other side of the street.
Okay, so the fear is that the parking situation will be exacerbated by this development if it goes through?
That was their fear, that's correct.
Okay. Well, because I'm looking at the city staff report, it says that the parking for both the townhomes and the apartments exceed the state requirements. Do you anticipate people in the development parking out on the street?
That's correct. And actually, this site has the ability to park on the private drive, and as well as the fact that you've got access into the shopping center and that portion of the, of the shopping center, which if there was any need for spillover parking, it would not affect existing residences.
Okay, thanks.
So we've got some public comments, some speakers. You have two minutes each. I would like to ask a couple of things. One is, I know you're passionate about this, but if you're clapping, it's hard for the folks to hear, and I know how you feel about it, but I'm going to ask personally, I can't speak on behalf of the council. What I'm looking for is, this property is zoned commercial. Something's going there. It's either going to be housing units or commercial. I'd like to hear from those who are impacted by this, why you feel one way or the other in relation to that, because there's property rights, they are zoned to build a commercial site there. And that's what I'm looking for. And I, again, I just want to reiterate how grateful I was the last time you folks were here. You set the example on civility. So when you come and speak, I would greatly appreciate giving us insight because this is helpful for us. And so with that being said, our first speaker is Marcella Ocampo, and then followed by Adam Longman. Hello. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having me speak today. First, I'm going to probably talk a little quickly because I only have two minutes, but first, I think on behalf of most of the neighbors, we do appreciate the contributions of what Mr. Cohen has, you know, given to the community in past years. But I think with him closing out the project and leaving somewhat of his legacy behind, he would want to close it out in, you know, not risking the safety or the congestion that possibly could happen with whatever is on this plan as of today. I do have something. I hope you can put it up on the screen.
Can you just bring it down a little bit for us? Perfect, thank you.
So I just want you to look at that picture that was given to me by one of my neighbors, and I'm going to focus on one thing, first of all. The, the other neighbors were probably focused on parking and congestion and whatnot, but I'm going to focus on the lane adjacent to the property, the lane that's basically used for commercial trucks. And I actually talked to the management company at, managers at Albertson's, and I talked to them and said, you know, there's been an ongoing issue as of today with that alleyway. There's trucks parked all the time there. There's trucks parked all the time there. There is a blind corner, so if you're one of the homeowners driving around the corner, there is a blind corner. And there are trucks parked there starting at 7:00 a.m. They told me there's 40 trucks that, per week, that move back and forth in that area. And I quote her by saying that is a very busy alleyway, as is. And for people to be coming in and out of that alleyway, it's already a problem. There's no pedestrian walkway either. There's people that do tend to walk in that area even though they're not really supposed to, but they do. Now, if you put a development there, you're going to have more congestion coming into that alleyway. I was even told that that would be one of the main entrances and exits for the apartments. Now we're talking about 47 units, double...
Give us a synopsis because you're out of time, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, I'm just saying, there's going to be 47 units, double cars, so that's like 100 cars coming in and out of that alleyway. It's a safety hazard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very insightful, thank you. Following Adam will be Robert Fillett, Fillett? So Adam, you're up. Yes, sir. Adam Longman? Hello, sir.
Hi, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. My wife and I will live in the neighborhood at Oak Creek Canyon, about 0.6 miles from the proposed development. And we are concerned, as our neighbors are, about this development for the few reasons that I'm going to describe, hopefully under two minutes. 50 units appears to me to be excessive and will result in significant congestion, as was mentioned before, including the number of cars that will have to be parked in on the street. As you, most of you know, even though their parking garages have been supplied, if you look around our neighborhood, many people do not use their garages for parking. They, they use them for storage. So a lot of these cars will be inevitably parking outside of the garage and will probably spill over on the street. There are risks also for emergency vehicles and fire, because of fire or earthquake, because if parks, cars are parked on that street, including on the alley that was mentioned, that could cause some risks. We also do not have public transportation, so I know every person who lives there will own a car or multiple cars. So those were the main things I wanted to bring up, and I hope that the council will consider our concerns.
Thank you, sir. Robert, and then following Robert will be Ron Rich. And folks, if you're looking at me and I do that, that gives you 10 seconds, so at least you know where you're at with it all. So I'll do my best to help you out. Hello, sir.
Hi, my name is Bob Fillett, and I have lived in Oak Creek Canyon for 19-plus years. In Mr. Town's presentation, he made the statement that parking exceeds requirements. That is only if you use a formula obviously calculated by someone who has never lived in Southern California. Approximately 50% of the people in the adjoining neighborhoods don't use their garages for their cars. They use them for everything from bicycles, workshops, motorcycles, toys, junk, everything else. So with the number of cars that this development would need, the number of excess cars to the parking that's available, the cars would be parked up Maurice, they would be parked on Fallbrook, they would be parked on Havenside, they would be parked on Knollwood. And we've all paid a lot of money for some really nice houses, and we really didn't buy into having our neighborhood being a parking lot. Quite frankly, in answer to your question, Mayor McCoy, this is simply too big a project. Okay, I have no problem with residential there if it's something like 10 townhomes with sufficient parking. And the other point I want to make, and I want to add something to what Marcella just talked about, I don't know if you all realize, but the 37 apartments exit and enter onto the Albertsons driveway. That's what in New York or Boston you would call an alleyway. I walk my dog up there. I see bicyclists, I see skateboarders, I see parents with children, I see cars going to and from Albertsons, and I see big rigs. On that particular driveway, there's no sidewalks, there will never be any sidewalks, okay? What happens if a car hits a kid and there's a wall on one side that's blocked? It's not going to move. You're going to have a dead child. This is just too big a project. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, sir. Ron Rich, followed by Melanie Rudis? Hello, sir.
Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I think I got the problem solved for you. Mr. Cohen, you can make a donation to the city.
Could you speak into the mic, please, sir?
Turn it into a park.
Could you speak into the mic for us?
Oh, sure. I think you should turn it into a park. Seriously, you can't do anything, or do it commercial. It's too big a project. Take a tax deduction. Do a Trump thing. Make it a park. Do something. Then you won't have a traffic problem. If I hit the lottery tomorrow or whenever, I'll buy it out from everybody, you can have it your way. It's simple. Just that, you know, make a donation to the city. The city does all kinds of crazy things. Help out with the park. And you don't have to worry about heavy, heavy traffic and congestion. So I'm going to cut it short because I probably already screwed up anyway. So what do you think about that, Mr. Cohen? Trump lost billions and he's still writing them off. It's the best I can do for you guys because I'm not coming up with a plan for you guys. It's overbuilt. Don't do it, it's too much traffic. You're loaded with congestion now from the name of the other place. What's that one? They're parking there all the time now. You start adding more, I don't know, maybe another life. Thanks, people.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. Following Melanie will be Jeff Stein-Kivler. Thank you.
I have a picture here on my phone. I don't know if it's going to come up or not, but this is a...
We can see it.
Okay, that's just a picture that I took on a weekend, and that is Maurice Drive. My name is Melanie, I'm a lifetime resident of Canejo Valley and a longtime teacher in the Canejo Valley Unified School District. I have two small children that attend our neighborhood CVUSD school. I was present at the first city council meeting on this topic and felt it was very important to make sure that we, as a community, had a strong presence as this continues through the process. Yesterday, I was going to put up flyers on our community mailboxes to inform my neighbors of tonight's meeting. When I left for an appointment, I saw that the flyers, that the flyers were already up. Good, one less thing for me to do. When I returned an hour later, those flyers were gone, so I proceeded to put up my own. As I was walking down the street, I saw remnants of the previous flyer, and it was indeed informing the neighbors of this very important meeting. This afternoon, I contacted our HOA to ensure that they were not the ones behind removing the flyers, and her response was, again? In fact, our HOA were the ones responsible for putting up the previous flyers to inform us of this meeting and had done so multiple times, but they kept disappearing. This afternoon, when I returned home from work, I saw that the flyers that I had just put up yesterday were in fact gone today. The developer was asked to reach out to the surrounding neighborhoods and HOAs, which he did. He was told to, so he did. He checked that box. But for what purpose? There's been no change, no modifications made, no willingness to work together with the established surrounding community. Is this the kind of behavior we want to embrace and reward? Is this the kind of business that we want in our backyard? This is a quiet, established neighborhood. By your own general plan, it's designated commercial for the exact reason that somebody does not come in and put in a three-story, high-density apartment complex in our neighborhood. I'm concerned about our privacy with the three-story building looming over us. Thank you.
Good evening. I just wanted to make my opinion noted. The density of the building is, project is too large. Imagine in your neighborhood if somebody brought 20% more residents right on your, on your corner of your neighborhood, at the entrance to your neighborhood. The neighborhood adjacent Brighton Lane has no residential parking allowed in the community. It's parking on Maurice Avenue. You double that or triple that, and of guests coming into that community, it's just going to cause a more, more parking density. Also, when you, when you compare the traffic that they say commercial will bring, we already have commercial traffic there. It's not going to increase that much more. It's also dependent on what type of business gets put there. If it's a veterinarian office, like someone said, you know, that's a small number of cars. It just depends what gets built there. I don't have a problem with residential. The density is just too large. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mickey Reiser, and then Carol Lucas. And I forgot to say, Ms. Rudis, thank you for your service to our kids.
You're welcome.
Hello, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Good evening, Mr. Reiser.
My name is Mickey Reiser. I live across the street from the project on the corner of Woodland Oak and Reno. And the first I knew about this, unfortunately, was Thursday at the Acorn, and then I got a flyer yesterday. Excuse me. So I wasn't aware of exactly what was going on till recently. Our community, and our president is with us, the HOA, was not notified and haven't not gotten any reach out, which is fine, we're here now. A couple of things kind of concern me. A developer that owns property wants to get the most bang for the buck. That property, in the 12 years that I'm living there, I've lived in the Canejo for 42 years in Thousand Oaks, and I'm living there 12 years. My backyard is 172 feet from the complex. So I look at that on a daily basis, and all I see is the Albertsons wall. So I would love to see it developed in one way or another. I think it's great to build buildings. I think the density is ridiculous. I'm concerned about children playing along Reno. Reno is a racetrack. I don't know if you know it, but where we are between Maurice and Reno and Woodland Oak, there's a kind of a turn and a curve, and it goes up at 4:00 in the afternoon till about 6:00 in the afternoon. I would not let my dog out because of that racetrack. I mean, it's just really dangerous. Everybody wants to get home after work, and it's a busy road. So my concern, of course, is children playing along Reno, children that are going to live in that area might have a problem. The other thing that I want to address, and it's just two, two, three other items...
You have about 10 seconds.
Okay, then I won't finish it. But I think the most important thing is the density of the project. I'd love to see housing there or commercial, but I disagree with the city in one respect, and that's the traffic count. If you have, for argument's sake, somebody said before, a veterinarian, a veterinarian building on that property would not have as much traffic as 42 or 47 residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reiser. Carol Lucas, followed by Jeff Moss. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Carol Lucas, and I've lived here for, since 1970. And in that time, we have fought the Cohen family because they always want to put way more building in any lots, in any development they've had. The reason they donated that land for the flood control was because the land that they had designated there was in a hundred-rear floodplain, so they had to put it in. It wasn't like they wanted to. My concern is with the apartment buildings, this is a single-family neighborhood, we don't really want to have apartment buildings in our neighborhood. And the amount of grading that would be done, can you imagine the dust and dirt and all the trucks loaded with dirt? That the people that live right across the street, their properties are going to be unlivable while that is going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lucas. Jeff Moss, followed by Jared Freilich.
Hi, my name is Jeff Moss. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
You know, I don't think I can say much more about the high-density issue. I mean, it's a, it's a low-density area, and you're looking to put in 50 apartments that are high-density in a 1.57-acre spot. It just doesn't fit. There's going to be a lot of accidents, a lot of congestion, probably some kids getting killed. You know, if you live back there, we moved back there because we wanted to get away from the traffic. You know, it's a spiritual place. If you've been back there, you've got Boney Mountain, you've got the Point Mago State Park. It's a really, really unique area, and it's kind of one of the few hidden gems left in the Canejo Valley. And if you, if you spoil it with 50 apartments, three stories, I mean, you're really stealing something from the Canejo Valley, one of the few places that are left that you can go and feel like you're out in the country. So you're, I think you're going to be a, just do a huge disservice to the, to the Canejo Valley by, by putting that there. And yeah, something, they have the right to build something there. You know, we could use a couple nice restaurants, or a vet clinic, or a daycare, or something that is going to benefit the residents. Because me, as a homeowner, you know, it's, it's not going to benefit me at all, having a 50-unit apartment complex there. And, you know, it will bring down property values, and I'm concerned about that. I love living there, and I drive that road every day, and there is a little S-turn in there, and my daughter goes to Albertsons every day. And, you know, it's a nightmare waiting to happen. I know I'm out of time, but I hope you guys just red-flag this thing because it's going to be a real problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moss. Jared, you'll be followed by Chris Arnon.
Thank you. All right, so at one of the perfunctory meetings held by Mr. Gallagher, he gave us some advice as he was pretending to have our best interests at stake. He said, we should only have two or three members of our community come up and speak tonight because, and I quote, "If you have too many members, the council members zone out and don't listen." So I want to make sure I have your attention tonight. Mr. Cohen donated that nice flood area. He was already rewarded handsomely for those, that building project where my house currently is and a lot of our houses currently are. So he doesn't need any more cookies from you guys to get this project greenlit. The fact that the option that they're presenting tonight is that this 25,000-square-foot area would be a commercial development if this project was not greenlit by the council, that's not true either because there are alternatives. You've already heard people speaking, saying, how about lower density or match what's already in the surrounding neighborhood, which is medium density. I would not be opposed to that, and I think we've already heard several people here who wouldn't be opposed to it either. But what have we got from our meetings with Mr. Cohen? We have the same garbage project with the same garbage problems, and it doesn't look like you're really reaching out to any, you're just doing a perfunctory task. It's very disingenuous.
Jared, if you would address your comments to us, please.
It feels very disingenuous. And I would like to commend the council members who asked, why hasn't this project changed? You've met with us, why hasn't it changed? And you asked that, and I thank you very much for that.
Thank you, sir. Chris, Chris, you're up, or Chris Arnon, and then following that will be Muriel Adams. Hello.
Since I don't have much time to mess with the projector, we're going for the low-tech approach here. I'm not against development, but I am against patchwork development. This three-story-high proposal is not part of a beautiful master-plan community. This is an isolated island just being thrown in to an area that was not designed or planned for that. People made the biggest investments of their lives buying homes in this area based on the zoning. As soon as you change the zoning and then grant a variance for high height that's blotting out people's views, you're lowering property values and you're changing the whole character of the neighborhood. The other thing I want to talk about is the reality of housing in California. I own a property management company. I'm dealing with tenants all the time. I'm showing properties all the time. In the last six years, things have fundamentally changed. We are in an era of multi-generational, multi-families occupying one residence. We're also in the shared economy where people are renting out rooms and couches in their residences, whether it's an apartment, a townhouse, a condo, or a home. We moved to Thousand Oaks because we were living in a high-density, three-story townhouse development that had apartments in it. Those townhouses sold for approximately $500,000. We thought at that price level, they would be single-family homes. What we got was entire families living in each room... What we got was entire families living in each room of the homes of those townhouses. The truth came out when the fire alarm went off in the middle of the night, and I lost count at 120 people coming out of six townhouses next to ours. And at that point, we moved to Thousand Oaks. So the reality of a three-story-high structure, this is on Newbury Road, the architectural renderings are fantasies. This is what the reality is as far as the appearance and the traffic. And this is how high the buildings are.
Okay. I appreciate your low-tech. Muriel Adams followed by Leanne Tapper. Leanne, you're on deck. Muriel's first, and Leanne, you're up next.
My name's Kathy Schultz. I'm Muriel's daughter. My mother's over there.
Hello.
She's 88 years old and still going strong. And I move over to her house three times a week, so I travel that area a lot. And she has everything she owns invested. Now, I don't know about you, but at one point in time, my family had six cars because my kids all had cars and I had cars. Now, if you work that into 75 cars for 50 apartments, that just does not compute if anybody has teenagers. So I think there's going to be a huge shortage of parking. And there is a wetlands preserve that runs through Oak Creek that had to be addressed. It couldn't just, you can't just have the water running in a creek and have it stop. And that's why that waterway had to be built. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And by the way, she wants it to be a commercial still. So I'm going to let my mom have her way.
Duly noted. Leanne, just a moment, please. After Leanne will be Denise Coulter. So if you could get on deck, get ready to speak. Welcome, Leanne.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor McCoy and City Council members. I'm here tonight to let you know that I and over 498 local residents oppose the zoning proposal for the residential project at 3801 Maurice Drive. I emailed you all this week. The petition that I drafted, I have it here tonight. It's almost 500 signatures, all opposing this, most wanting it to remain commercial. Since my husband and I moved here in 2010, we've seen a huge increase in traffic and congestion at this intersection. And we specifically moved to this area due to slow growth plans, great schools, and open space. I attended the Twin Oaks HOA meeting with the Cohen family representative, Tim Gallagher, on April 1st. When we asked him if retailers contacted Mr. Cohen about utilizing this space in a commercial way, we were informed that he did indeed have two parties interested, a self-stored unit complex and a childcare center. Apparently, he didn't think that these were good uses of the space. I recently read the traffic impact study conducted by the city, and I do not think this is entirely accurate, as the traffic strips only measure traffic coming in from one direction and out from another. Many people in this community now use the Fallbrook and Kimber intersection to avoid turning left on Maurice and Reno because of this dangerous intersection. Well, and no traffic strips were laid there. The study also indicated that there have only been three accidents in the last 10 years at this corner. And I know that's just to be false, as I've witnessed two of the major accidents just within the last six months. Maybe police reports weren't filed, so it wasn't counted. I don't know. But in both instances, cars were totaled and when a traffic sign actually fell over. And just two weeks ago, actually, another major accident occurred. Thank you. So please listen to your constituents. Myself and 498 residents implore you to not go forward with this prescreen process.
Thank you, dear. Denise, and then following Denise will be Niles Kaplan. You're on deck. Hello.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members.
Good evening.
My name is Denise Coulter, and I'm a 17-year resident of Newbury Park. I am worried about the increased parking problems and traffic that the proposed residential project would cause. I believe it would be dangerous for my children and the other children that walk and ride their bikes in the area. Currently, there is only parking, as you heard, allowed on one side of Maurice Drive. And if parking was allowed on both sides, the roadway would still be too narrow to mitigate increases in traffic. I ask that you not allow this project to go forward as a high-density apartment complex.
Thank you. Niles Kaplan followed by Samantha Bork. Hello, Mr. Kaplan.
Hello. I'm the board president of the Reserve at Reno, 20-unit, single-family housing development right across the street. In fact, our closest neighbor is less than 150 feet from the subject property. And even though I know it's in the preliminary stage, this pre-planning phase, being the board president, I was chagrined to learn about this from Mickey Reiser, one of our residents, late this afternoon. But I did get to speak to the board, and I'm asked on behalf of the board to express our request to the council to red-light this project right at this point and not let this lunacy proceed any further. I was, I'm a retired university professor, and in doing a little bit of research while I was sitting here, I had looked up the purpose of zoning. And the purpose of zoning or land-use designation, and I quote, "Was created in part to preserve the character of the community." And in looking at the proposal, changing the land-use designation from commercial to high-density residential, this proposed project will change the character of our entire community and certainly not for the better. Also, I was surprised to view the attachment number five that you've received, that the developer says that the neighborhood has expressed a preference for multifamily residential use at this location so long as the proposed residential product does not compete in size or value of the units with the neighbor's residential property. So basically, they're saying that our neighborhood, and I'm assuming it's the homeowners surrounding this proposed development, expressed a preference to them for multifamily residential use. And I'm not sure what neighborhood they posited on this. It must have been Mr. Rogers' neighborhood because it certainly wasn't ours. Thank you very much.
Samantha Bork followed by Mr. Kennedy. Hello.
Hi. Let's see. Okay, so I live less than two blocks away from Albertsons'. I go there every single day, sometimes twice a day because my kids need milk. So, no joke.
Relax, you're doing great. Just relax.
No joke. My kids are going to be walking to school right by there. There's no way I want my kids walking by a low-income housing. My husband and I have worked our entire lives to get where we are, to buy this house, to live in this community. Like, we picked this community over every other community in the United States of America. Like, there's nothing else like it. It's perfect. Putting this in, yes, it's going to cause lots of traffic. It's not safe. We really honestly have nothing in Newbury Park except for our safety and our happiness and our families. Low-income housing is not what we want. We would, everyone here, I think, would be happy with a commercial. We don't have any restaurants. We really have nothing but our safety. And we're fine with that. We love that. But don't take away our safety. Leave it blank rather than do that. And, you know, with the whole Boise bill going in and then this, that's kind of just a lot to handle. And the Cohen, I feel like they have also done a few projects in the past with opening a home with mental illnesses that caused a lot of people to move out of the area. It didn't work out. It wasn't good. So I don't know why he's going to another area like this. I don't think it's going to be good for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy followed by Wayne Baldwin. Hello.
Good evening. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Good.
Well, I am. I don't know about the rest, but I'm okay.
My point is, you asked about the impact, commercial, residential.
Right.
Everyone's already said you have more traffic with the number of units, 50 units. So if you have two cars, it's 100 cars, you're not counting family and guests coming in for the holidays. Commercial side, holidays, businesses are closed unless you're Albertsons' and you're getting your turkey, right? Then it's all packed. So the impact of having a commercial to a residential is less. Plus, Newbury Park is not like other towns and other cities or Newbury Park. We have a way of life. We enjoy our beauty, and three stories of high-impact residency is not one of them. Within Newbury Park, we have zones, if I'm not mistaken, for such projects. There's land that could be used elsewhere. If they want to build something up, why not use empty warehouses, put a business underneath, and build up from there? Our small community doesn't need several, several hundred people added on a daily basis along with their traffic. 20 seconds remaining.
Leonard Levine followed by Seiya Roberts. Oh, I'm sorry, Wayne. Who'd we say before?
I'm Wayne.
Oh, yeah, you're up.
Nice to meet you.
You too. I'm sorry. It's a long night.
Not a problem. So I'm an attorney by training, and I represented developers and contractors for many years before I repented. And I am, a recovering attorney. And at the same time, what I learned was that there's one motivation behind all of it, and it's profit. And that's what you're hearing about tonight. And to me, I can't say much more than what's already been said, other than to say, the general plan is a general plan for a reason. And what you're doing is talking about modifying that general plan in a very substantial and significant way that requires a lot of thought and a lot of attention. And there's only one reason you're thinking about doing it, and that's a project that nobody wants, except for a developer who wants to make a profit. And so I tried to come up with a picture as a thousand words, right? I tried to come up with something that would kind of tell you exactly how the community feels about it, and I found this. Hopefully, you can see it. What's out of place in that picture? It's, uh... It's gone.
I saw a toilet. Is that what you wanted me to see?
Yeah. That's okay. I still got time. That's okay. It won't take that long. There you go. What does that picture show you? It's something that's out of place. And in this particular instance, the toilet's out of place will overflow and clog things up, just like any other toilet will. And we don't want that running in our streets. We don't want it clogging up things. We don't want it to be an eyesore because three stories is out of context with the rest of what's built there. There's nothing wrong with the developer trying to make a profit. I get that. There is something wrong with trying to make the profit on the backs of the people who live there for something that nobody really wants. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Leonard, and then Seiya Roberts, and then Brenda Vasguanyan.
Members of the council, my name is Leonard Levine. I'm a retired hearing officer and zoning administrator with the City of Los Angeles. I moved here 20 years ago. When I moved in, that parcel that is subject to this whole hearing was vacant, and it's still vacant. It's been vacant the entire 20 years. I have institutional memory about that property. The issue I have with it more than anything else is the amount of density that is being proposed on that property. It's high-density being imposed on a low-density and medium-density neighborhood. I heard earlier that it may well require a traffic light at Rhino and Maurice because of the number of trips that are being generated by this project. I think I would ask that the density of this project be reconsidered substantially. If you're going to grant the land-use change, the general plan amendment and the zone change, I would request that you really consider greatly the density that this project would add to the whole community and the detriment that it would cause.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I had my speeches before many councils.
Well, thank you so much, sir. You're up, Ms. Roberts. Welcome back.
Hi. My name is Seiya Roberts, and I'm a resident. I just bought my house last year on Haven Side. There is only one ingress, or no, two ingresses and egresses out of that neighborhood. That is Kimber and Maurice. And Kimber is nonusable in the mornings because that's school traffic. Cypress Elementary is at the end of the block, and then there's a fire road. So that way, you cannot get through the neighborhood. On Maurice Drive, it would be counterintuitive to put the highest-density building at the entrance and exit of a neighborhood where everyone has to back up behind all these 50 people because realistically, most people go to work around the same time and come home from work around the same time. When you're talking about commercial, not everyone's going to the store at the exact same time or wherever they're going. And they're entering a parking lot. The entrance is on the others, the entrance is actually on Reno, and there's an entrance on Maurice, and there's an entrance on Kimber to that parking lot. So it's not like everyone's going to be going in and out at the exact same time. So even if more cars come and go per day, it's not at the same time, and it's through different exits, and they're parking in a parking lot designated for that area. Another thing is it doesn't match the characteristic of the neighborhood. I would not have bought my house last year had at the entrance there been a big apartment complex with low-income housing. I would not have. One of the reasons I bought in that area is my kids ride their bikes, they're on dirt bikes, this and that, as all the other kids are. You see tons of kids on skateboards. It's just not an apartment-type of neighborhood. It is a single-family residential area or commercial where if you want to put a restaurant or whatever, would do business. The only reason they want to build the max capacity, every square inch of that land, is for money and nothing else.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Brenda, are you here? Okay, so Brenda went home. Darren Hanson. And then following Darren will be Brett Boynton.
Hello. Hello. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. My name is Darren Hanson. I've been a resident of Newbury Park for 18 years. We appreciate that the developer had a few outreach meetings with the HOAs, and Tim Gallagher actually was a pretty nice guy. However, that's as far as it goes. All they did was take notes of our concerns. They did not bring any new site plans. They didn't bring any new building layouts. They didn't bring anything. As far as I'm concerned, they took one step forward and five steps back. They also didn't modify their application or request. Just meeting to hear our concerns is not what the community wants. We want to see the new layout and proposal. It's very apparent that Albert Cohen does not care what the community wants. This outreach was a very disingenuous effort to reach out to the community. It is very obvious that the applicant is trying to push the proposal through the process. I'm very disappointed and upset at the same time. The applicant needs to come back to the community with a revised proposal that mitigates, to the best that it can, the community's concerns. Allowing this application to move forward as submitted with the proposed zone change for high-density is wrong for the community. High-density does not fit in our neighborhood. You're hearing it over and over and over again. I hope you don't reward the applicant approval to move forward until they modify their request and their application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boynton?
Hello.
Following you will be Aaron Schwartz.
Good evening, City Council. Your communities come to you tonight. And just please do the right thing. Bob said it, people, the project's a joke. It's too big. It's too big, it's wrong. And I've lived on Maurice Drive for 18 years, just about 100 yards west of the project, basically a football field. You have my phone number, my email address. You're welcome to talk to me. I've walked by that lot thousands of times. And here's the problem. What you have is a low-visibility, blind corner on Maurice and Reno. And, you know, you're going to twist reports, this, I mean, who says parking, they do studies, what time of days and nights, but if you have, if you're trying to ram 50 units in there, what you're going to end up with is at least 200 cars. I mean, I don't care, because you've got the Aaron B&amp;B, and they've got people in multiple rooms, and this and that, and multiple children. And just grasp, please wrap your head around this one thought. Please, just envision a 1.7-acre parcel of dirt with 100 to 200 cars navigating in and out of there with blind corners, which you got on with Albertsons. It's been said that the project's too big, it's wrong, whether it's greed or this. Stop it. Everyone does not want it built. Please, please, listen to your community and do the right thing. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Aaron? Following Aaron will be Eric Tremblay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. Appreciate the time. I live on Haven Side, also about two blocks away from the project, with my wife and my three children, who are enjoying playing video games right now, rather than being in bed for school, because I'm here with my wife. I think, I can't speak as eloquently as many other people have. I first learned about this a couple weeks ago from my HOA, so apparently I was not one of the people that Mr. Cohen knocked on their door, which apparently was a sample size of two, based on everyone who's spoken tonight. But in all seriousness, this council spoke very eloquently earlier this evening on other very important topics about the importance of property owners and property rights. And I understand Mr. Cohen has his property rights, absolutely. And I understand that unlike the homelessness issue, which is incredibly vexing and affects the entire city, this is one small neighborhood. But it affects all of us incredibly deeply, hundreds of us. And I would just ask this council to keep an open mind. Quite frankly, some of the initial comments made it seem like perhaps some people had already made their minds up, and I would just ask you to keep an open mind and really think this through, the fact that no changes had been proposed after meeting with at least some of us, clearly not most of us. And we would ask you to keep an open mind. I don't think anyone, you know, despite, I think, the comment about a park, which I know we would all love, but we also know is, most of us know is not realistic. Something that is residential, fine. Something that is compatible and fair. I think that's really the theme that most people have expressed. Something that's compatible with our neighborhood and a three-story-high, highly-dense apartment complex on a very small pulse of land, which is small because of the way Mr. Cohen developed his commercial property. I mean, that's why it's the size it is, is the plans he made on the Albertsons Plaza. So I really don't think it's fair for us to pay the price that he wants to squeeze every last drop out of this tiny parcel at the entrance of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Aaron, Aaron, Aaron. I want to apologize, I was multitasking, but I was listening. I heard what you had to say. Thank you, friend. Eric Tremblay, and then followed by Kilmar Martinez.
Well, good evening, everyone. Good to be back here again. I actually prepared something, but I'm not going to use it, because I only have two and a half minutes, or two minutes.
A minute and 50.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, the sentiment is pretty apparent, and it's pretty obvious that no one's in support of this, really. Yeah, we're willing to accommodate in certain regards, but I've seen a lack of, there's just disingenuity, and there's just not, the developers here have shown a lack of regard for what we care and what we want and what our community is. And Mr. Jones, I know that you've responded to some emails from people asking, what is the impact? Is there going to be a negative impact? And I think we've clearly demonstrated that, as it is right now, yes, there is going to be a negative impact. Our quality of life is a concern. We purchased our homes and our property based on an expectation of quality of life, and this project is going to severely negatively impact that. One thing that also I've noticed has fallen completely off the bullet points, is that we were talking about affordable income, homes, low-income homes, things of that nature. That's not even a part of the discussion tonight, and it's good, because it never was really a part of the discussion. Moderate-income housing is not something we need. We are 300% over, you had mentioned earlier. $81,000 is the income levels for that. And so to have that be a part of the conversation, I felt was very disingenuous, too, at some point, and I'm glad, I guess, to see that it's not anymore. I really hope that this council does the best thing it can do for the residents that are currently there, and I think we unanimously said that we are not in approval of this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kilmar Martinez, followed by Michael Hawkins. Hello, sir.
Hello. Hello, everyone. My name is Kilmar. I'm right here in front of you, speaking at this moment, in favor of the affordable household, since I'm...
Kilmar, would you speak into the mic, so we can, thank you, friend?
My apologies. I will start again, if that's fine. Hello, everyone. My name is Kilmar. I'm going to be a speaker right now on the four of the affordable house income. Since I've been dealing for a year and a half of traveling back and forward from where I live. You guys have a really nice bioscience industry at this moment, and I'm going to become a biochemistry soon, but my issue at the moment is that I don't have any money at the moment to be able to afford any house in this place. And most of the biopharmacies is either in Thousand Oaks or San Diego, and I really like to work in the scientific field. So this affordable house income will help me and many other people who are willing to come over to your town, not just to do as many things as you believe, but actually have a nice life as you guys have, and as well maybe enjoying the same things that you do. As you know, we all are humans, and we all believe and have the same fears and ideas that you guys have. So as you were pointing out, low-income families, that kind of hurts some other people who, for example, myself, who doesn't have that much, but is trying to do as best as they can in life, being called in that way, it kind of hurts. But on top of that, the new household income, household income will help people like me and any others who are working back and, who are coming back and forward from one, two, three hours from LA and other this and other areas, just to come over and work here, will help those people to have a better life, and also improve the economy of your city, and as well the productivity, any company who have employees, who have people outside this community. Thank you so much, guys. Have a great day.
Thank you, Kilmar. Michael? You're batting cleanup.
Thank you for hearing me tonight. When this issue came before the council in February, it marked the first council meeting I had ever attended. I found it interesting. I watched as a parade of community members came to speak out against the project, and frankly, was quite surprised that the rezoning request wasn't shot down that night. Later that week, I legally chucked the acorn for its account, and I found this quote from Mr. Cohen, who represents the out-of-town owner of the parcel in question. "The reason my client deviated from the existing zoning on the property was to comply with the request of homeowners." Did they get you accurately?
Direct your questions to the council, please.
I'm assuming that's an accurate quote. And from that, we can infer that Mr. Cohen, the out-of-town owner of the property, wants to comply with the wishes of the homeowners, and as you see tonight, what the wishes are. Speaking to the owner directly, I'd like to say that I envy you, sir. You have the opportunity to build a love letter to the community that made you a multimillionaire. I've been to Austin, Texas, they have four food truck parks, they're delightful places full of good times and laughter and conviviality. You have a 1.7-acre blank slate, Mr. Cohen, where you can create something so innovative, so magical, so out of the box, that a photo's guide on Thousand Oaks, if they ever chose to write one, would cite the parcel as one of the can't-miss attractions of Thousand Oaks. In 50 years, most of us in this room are going to be dead, but what we put on that land is going to live on long afterwards. Mr. Cohen, I ask you, get in touch with your better angels. This parcel is your legacy. You don't have to squeeze every last nickel out of every last square inch of land that you own. I was a little concerned tonight when I heard comments from Mr. Adam and Mr. Powers, who seemed to be trying to put their foot in the door, like, oh, this isn't a final decision, we'll just let it go forward, we'll just let it go forward. This thing needs to be killed tonight. Mr. Mayor, you were also quoted in the article. You said, and this is a comment I heard you say when you came up to speak to the people...
Your time's up, so go ahead and get to it.
Mr. Hanson was going to give me his 30 seconds.
It doesn't work that way, but go ahead and finish your quote.
Okay, you said, folks, I just want to commend you on, this is the power of local government. Okay?
Got it. I remember what I said. Thank you.
Please, please don't be patronizing us that night. I asked the people, the members of the council...
All right, your time's up. I appreciate it. Thank you. Your time's up. I wish you'd finished properly like everybody, but thank you, Mr. Hawkins. So we're going to move on. Staff responses?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few comments. We heard a number of speakers obviously talk about the height being inappropriate for the site. We heard a number of speakers talk about density being too much for the site. I would only offer that, again, this is early in the process, those issues could be addressed through the planning and design process. We have processed a number of projects over the years that have been reduced in terms of height, in terms of density, through that process, and that's the norm. In addition, I wanted to, just to mention, there were concerns about low-income housing. What I stated before was accurate, of course, in terms of the city, state requirements for the city and the city's status with regard to low and very low-income units. The applicant has offered to provide five of moderate-income units. That's, again, 80 to 120% of venture account and median income. These units, if they were to change to low or very low-income units, it would probably only be a few units, a very small percentage of the overall, if it were to go forward in this density, which would still be an open question going forward in terms of the analysis. That's actually all I had right now, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Questions from the council? Well, it says, questions of staff, if they have any. Any questions of staff?
I don't have my button here, but...
Okay. Councilmember Jones?
I'm sorry.
Ask questions of the staff.
I'm still learning how to use this machine here.
But this is questions for the staff, councilmember?
Yes. Mr. Town, do you really feel that with only minor modifications, that this would be compatible in that neighborhood?
I think that residential is a use that would, could be compatible with that site. Now, I've heard what the speakers have said tonight, obviously, and issues such as height and density, those are all fair game going forward. I think the fact that you have residential on three sides of this property in part indicates that that could be an appropriate use of the property compared to commercial. Now, I went through a number of potential commercial uses earlier. There's a whole variety of retail uses that could go there. In my mind, a right-sized residential project could fit on that property and be compatible with the neighborhood, and that really is what this comes down to tonight, is neighborhood compatibility. Whether a zone change and general plan amendment to change the use is compatible with the neighborhood, and that's why we're here at this early stage in the process. I think residential could be a good use for the property, though.
But what about residential at this particular density and the concern about only a couple really entrances into that? I spent about 45 minutes over there today, walking around. And I'm wondering, at these areas, I'm just wondering if the amount of cars, you know, that would, I understand that there are traffic studies, and you've done them, and you say that there would be less traffic with residential, but we've heard tonight that the traffic that would be with kids going to school and go to work, it seems like the traffic would be rather congested at a couple times of the day, rather than commercial, that would be probably more equal throughout the hours, if I'm saying that correctly.
Well, I'm referring again to the initial traffic analysis from Public Works. It looked at both, total number of daily trips, it was significantly higher with commercial. Also looked at the PM peak hour, which is around 5:00, and that was also significantly higher with commercial than residential. You're right, there are different patterns during the day. That's what the initial analysis concluded.
Well, when you did your analysis, how much commercial were you contemplating they could get on that property?
Well, we used a number that was provided by the applicant, that's, which is in line with, well, if I can finish, if I can finish, if I can finish. We used a number of 25,000 square feet for that property, which is not entirely out of line with the typical proportion of a commercial site of that size that would actually have...
If they had 25,000 square feet under roof, how many parking places would they have to have?
I don't have that number right now.
But I mean, a significant amount of that lot would be parking, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Maybe half and half, half building, half parking, or maybe a little more parking?
It would be more parking than building.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Wrangler?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of comments tonight about the size of this property. People were talking, I was noting just a couple of words to kind of encapsulate what they were saying. Most were saying that this is just too large a property, or too large a project for this property. Help me, if this were a medium-density rather than high-density, what is, how could, how many units could be built under a medium-density which matches the rest of the neighborhood?
Under a medium-density for that size lot, approximately 25 units. So the medium-density, maximum density is 15 units per net acre, so 1.7 times 15 is 25.5, so roughly half. Correct. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. The applicant has a five-minute rebuttal.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. Members of the council. Just a couple of things that might be helpful to you. This property has been standing vacant since 2001. At that time, the value of the property as commercial or retail was significantly greater than it would have been in any other use. This property owner has attempted to market that property for the last 16, 17 years in that regard, to do the best kind of retail that he could possibly put on the site. That doesn't mean that he couldn't do retail on it today, but the reality is that he's attempted to do this for all of these years. You, the question has been raised with regard to the height of these buildings, and some concern about the fact that there's a three-story element. In essence, what you've got are two townhouse buildings that are, in fact, three-story, that face onto Maurice. The other three-story element are the apartments that are back up against a wall that is currently... up against a wall that is currently, you've seen the photograph. That wall is a blight on, on that neighborhood as, as a back wall of a market. Now, that wall also conveys the point, that if you're going to try to do housing of a, of a different nature, that you're having to put that kind of housing behind a market. The best and most compatible ability to provide for high-quality living on that site is to do exactly what's being proposed in, with regard to a three-story unit that covers that wall and, and allows for the, the, the project to be commercially feasible. So, I, I, you need to have a sense of, of that. This project could, could be built out with larger townhome units. That was not what the original impression that we had from the neighbors across the street wanted. Therefore, we designed this to be compatible with their desire. That was, that was determined several years ago by Mr. Cohen. The, the, the fact remains, though, that, that to do larger, smaller, larger units of a townhouse nature would not give you the ability to have some variety in terms of, of rental units in, in the Newbury Park area. Something that is actually appropriate and necessary and not incompatible with other people that are living in the area. I, I, we have not done a survey to determine how many of those homes that are, are in the area that are rented out. We don't know that, that particular factor. So, and I still, and I also heard somebody still be concerned that, that we're building 50 apartments. We're not building 50 apartments. We're building 10 townhomes that are situated in a way to be compatible with the properties across Maurice Drive. So, those, those points should be kept in mind as you consider the, this project. There was a question, I think, that was appropriately raised about continuing to dialogue with the neighbors. Now, they're, they're not very happy with us tonight. I understand that. They felt that we, we disregarded what, what they said. What we simply said is not that we disregarded it, is that it didn't fit within a, an appropriate planning project. So, you, you can be assured that as this project moves forward through the planning process, several things will happen, among them being additional meetings with the community and keeping them informed as to what, what's going on. And I'll be off the mic in just a second. So, that, that, among other things, in terms of, of meetings with the public, but also the evolution of this project, which can change during this year of further study. Thank you very much.
May I ask a question of the?
Just a moment, please. That concludes the applicant's rebuttal. Now, it's time for council discussion. First will be Mayor Protam Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have some questions of the applicant.
That's fine.
All right. And Mr. Cohen can answer Mr. Gallagher or Albert Cohen, as you deem fit. In listening to the residents this evening, there's some recurrent, in listening to the residents this evening, there's some recurrent concerns about the project. One is that private drive that runs next to the flood control channel and the safety because there's vehicles, you know, delivery vehicles that go in and out from Albertson's. Is it going to be necessary for the residents of this proposed project to use that private drive, or is there some other alternative?
The, well, we, we believe that the private drive is the better solution. And I, I don't think anybody wants to see a curb break on Reno Road. That would be one way to get to the, the back portion of the property. I don't think that's, that's less successful than using the private drive. The, the townhomes are reached off of Maurice.
Yeah.
There's only 10 of those that are being serviced. So, I, I'm not sure that I've got this fact correct, but I think we did check with Albertson's to determine how many semis go in there on a regular basis. And if, from, from what I heard, it was two per day. And they go in.
Semis.
Semis. There are other, there, obviously, there, you know, it's a shopping center, so there's other service vehicles that enter it as well. But to the best of our knowledge, that, that is not a, a debilitating fact with regard to being able to u, use the site. If, if you build retail on there, the same situation is going to arise.
All right. Okay. That's one area of concern. Parking is another one. The fear that the cars will spill out onto the neighborhood streets. How would you, and, you know, reading the staff report, according to the state requirements, you have more parking than, than necessary. But as the residents mentioned, you know, people do tend to own a lot of cars in the state of California. How would you prevent that from happening?
Well, I suppose there's a couple ways. One is that you can red, red mark the, the curb on the north, north side of Maurice Drive. That's one, one factor that could be applied. And you can limit the number of, of spaces of parallel parking on the private street. You can also provide for the ability of those people, because Mr. Cohen owns a shopping center, to be able to utilize for, as necessary, spaces in the, what would be the southwest corner of that shopping center.
Okay. And on this business of whether it be very low income, low income or moderate housing, there would be no difference in the design of a low-income unit versus a market rate unit?
If you were walking into the project or looking at it from the street, you would not know that there's any difference as to who, who's living there and what their price range is. For one thing, keep in mind this. We're talking, even if you talk about very low, for the people not to be nervous about it, the, the point being that we're talking about city employees, we're talking about postal workers, we're talking about teachers. We're still talking about people that have to make at least $40,000 a year. This is, we are not talking about what you had on your agenda earlier tonight. We're not talking about putting in derelicts or homeless. It's not the situation. These will be responsible people that will be able to pay rent for those units.
All right. And one, one or two more. It stated in the staff report that there've been efforts by Mr. Cohen.
But I, I'm sorry.
It stated in the staff report, there've been efforts by Albert Cohen to turn this into a commercial venture, but he was unsuccessful in doing that. And so, you're saying, why is that? Because he was unable to sell the property for commercial or unable to do it himself, or, or why?
Mr. Adam, I'm sorry. No.
Why, why has commercial failed there for the last decade?
Why?
The, the potential for a commercial development, and why has that?
Well, let me explain what, what occurred. When this property went through litigation and the plans were ultimately approved, essentially by, by the court rather than by the planning department, the, the, the reality came out that the county flood control district needed more land to manage that flood control channel in the back. That caused the change of the layout of this shopping center. Previously, Albertson's was going to face toward Reno Road. Because of that change, they had to, they had to reorient Albertson's to be facing north. That made for this lot to have the back end of Albertson's facing it. That's, not only is that detrimental to the lot, it's detrimental to the, to the people in the neighborhood. Now, they may not appreciate the fact that we're, that we're asking to put units there to, to screen that wall, but the, ultimately, if, if you think in terms of what this will look like upon, upon construction and build-out, that, that whole corner is going to be far more attractive than it is today. And it's going to enhance, not cut, the property values of the people in that neighborhood. Furthermore, if you'll recall on the drawings, that, that they are actually putting a landscaping feature at the, what would be the northwest corner of Maurice and Reno Road. So, as you come in there, you're going to have a low landscaping to manage the site distance, but also at the same time, do an aesthetic approv, abitification of that entire corner. That changes the entire attitude and, and, and the entrance to the, that residential area. Certainly far better than a vacant lot. And, and keep in mind, I mean, this may not resonate with, with our folks here, but the point is, you've got a vacant lot. If you, if, if Mr. Cohen is being, you know, wants to invest further in this neighborhood, it's got to be something that is, that's workable, that's economically feasible. That's what we've been attempting to, to do. Now, if there's going to be, there, there could be modifications of this project as we go through the planning process. As you well know, usually, that, that whole process doesn't start until you actually file an application. Well, the pre-screen has, has, has accelerated that whole process and actually, but also lengthened it by at least a year. So, the, the, there are good and valid reasons why that lot remains as it is. And it, and it, you know, today, you got to deal with it as it is.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Just one more quick question. This may be more appropriate for Mr. Town. I'm not sure, but there's been some question about the occupancy rate within these different units. Is, is there a way to regulate occupancy in apartments or condominiums to allow a certain maximum per unit, or is that beyond our purview?
Well, there, there are standards in terms of avoiding overcrowding in terms of people per square foot. It is very difficult to, to actually establish the number of people that are living in a unit, however. So, there, there are standards that we have applied through code compliance, but again, it's very difficult to prove those types of cases.
All right. Thanks.
You know, the size of the unit is, is your basic control, because if you take your question and go into any residential neighborhood, you, you could have, these are all single-family homes, but you could have three families living there if, if, if they chose to do that.
That does happen.
Yeah.
All right.
So, by, by proper construction, the, the right choice of amenities, the, the amount of, of parking that's available, those are all controls over the very point that you're raising.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'm done.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mr. Cohen. If you were to get the green light, as we've heard tonight, would you be prepared to make some adjustments downward in the number of units in the eventual project?
We may have to do that, depending upon how the process runs. Yes. We, we recognize that that is a, that is a prospect, because at this point, all we have is a proposal. We haven't filed a formal.
Well, I, I understand that. But I'm just wondering, do you have some, well, maybe you don't want to tell me, but do you have some bottom line that you could reduce this to, or have you thought about that?
Yeah. We, we, we definitely have thought about it. And, and there is no specific bottom line that, that we're addressing at this point. That's really the function of going through the process with your planning department and, and lining it up under SEQA. So, yeah, you know, even the, the mix of units and the type of units could change during the planning process. But that's going to be under the control of your planning staff and ultimately, the planning commission and yourselves. So, the, the.
I just wondered if we'd be doing you any favor.
I'm sorry?
I, I'm just wondering if we would be doing you any favor by letting you go forward. The purpose of this meeting, this red light, green light hearing, is to give you a, a tip-off right now as to whether or not you might be successful.
Correct.
A year from now, or whenever you get the final idea of the project. I don't think we would be doing you any favor if we let you start in the project with the idea that the way it is now, it's not really going to fly. I mean, that's my opinion.
Well, if you don't, if you don't allow a project to at least proceed through the planning process, then, then what do you end up with? You end up with a vacant lot or a, or a retail project being built on that site, which, which he's entitled to build. Now, as to whether it's economically successful or not, that time will tell. But the, but the point is that, you know, if you, look, to be very candid with you, Councilman Jones, if, if you're not satisfied at all with what we're proposing, and you would say, I'm never going to vote for this, it's better to tell us that tonight. I agree with that. But on the other hand, if you recognize that this lot is simply going to stay static and vacant and empty, and an eyesore on the community, in my opinion, then, then we need at least the opportunity to prove that we can do a good project on that site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen, I, I know that Councilmember Bill DeLapena wants to make a motion. I, I would just like to say that, Mr. Cohen, I, I'm in favor of property rights, and you have a piece of property that has commercial zoning. It's not as profitable as residential. The process, in my estimation, is an overreach with the community, and, and the lack of community outreach has caused this to be quite a problem. And we do need housing, but we don't need a headache. And I, I know that if we don't approve it tonight, you can come back with a lower-density project. There's, there's a number of folks that want to be connected with. I want you to benefit from your property, but in the same regard, not at the expense of the community. As Mr. Rich wanted a park, I wouldn't want him to give his property away for a park any more than I want you to give your property away for a park. It's your property. I want you to benefit from it, but not at the expense of all the folks who've come out tonight. This, they have not been reached. I was hoping that when you came back tonight, there would have been a modification, and having listened to what everyone said.
I'm sorry. Can I be heard?
Tracy, who wants to speak? All right. Go ahead.
I'd like to be heard. I did not understood that this hearing was supposed to involve the public. When I asked a, the, the junior planning department, in October, I said we're being scheduled for public hearing for this hearing, and I, do you want me to send, send out public notices for 300 or 500-foot radius? He told me, no, this is not a public hearing. This is just formality with the city, city council to proceed. I was taken back, but because this is a new process that the city has started. I've never gone through it, and I was, and I can tell you exactly who told me this and, and why we didn't, why we didn't do anything. Because he told me, it's not a public hearing. There's no neighborhood outreach required. That, and I, and he's not here tonight, but I'm sure he will tell you the truth. The other thing I, I want to point out is that in 2001, when this flood control district changed the direction of the Albertson's building, which was against our agreement with the city before the judge, I complained to, to the city attorney back then. I'm saying, and I told I'm saying, and I told her, Nancy, I said, "I can't build anything behind the anchor building because nobody wants to go behind the anchor. Everybody wants to be next to the anchor." And we lost 15,000 square foot of space that would have been right next to Albertsons because right now, next to Albertsons, you don't have anybody. And everybody in the world wants to be right next to the Albertsons where 10,000 people go through it every week. That's where the people wanna be. When we, when, when the city said, "Don't worry about it," we understand that now it may be a residential use. When the DP was approved and stamped by the city attorney, it says in the DP, "It will be future residential." And then, and my first application to the city to change it to residential was a plan that I prepared in 2007, 11 years ago, and I submitted it to the city back then, and they reviewed it. So this is not something that happened two years ago. In 2015, I hired an architect that lived in the, in the Twin Oaks community. Uh, he passed away unfortunately a year ago, got cancer, and he designed a bunch of projects that we submitted to the city. Now, we, as a family owner here, we have 40 years, I have 40 years of my life invested here. I am not gonna propose a project nor build a project behind our shopping center that's gonna decrease the value of our shopping center or anybody else's value. I'm proposing a project that was worked out with the, with the city staff. It was a lot less than 47 when we started. It went up there because things were added and they, and they asked for affordable housing and they bumped it up. But I'm willing to take the less than 47, but it has to make sense. So that's where we are. I did not go up to 47. Our proposal was a lot less than that. But that's how it morphed into 47 tonight. So, as I understand it again, you know, and I just wanna go on the record because everybody says dense, dense, dense. We have 10 townhouses, about 2,000 square feet average, 1,800 square feet, that I don't think anybody's objecting to those. So besides those, we're proposing 37 1,000-square-foot apartments in average. 37 1,000-square-foot apartments equals 12 to 14 2,000-square-foot townhouses that I can build. I can put 25 townhouse units on this lot. That would probably make us more money because I don't have to go subterranean parking. I don't have to provide a lot more open space. I don't have to provide a pool, a jacuzzi, a, a exercise room, a meeting room, a tot lot. But, but, so we can do that, but that's not what this neighborhood needs or the city needs. You need more reasonably-priced housing. I, I know the word affordable is, is a no-no, but again, as far as I was concerned tonight, I was told this is just the green light to proceed and there will be negotiations.
All right.
We're willing to negotiate with the neighborhood. They have, they've always told, they, they haven't negotiated. They've always torpedoed us, saying we want no resident, no, no residential, nothing, nothing. So we can negotiate that way, but then again--
I understand.
So that's where we are. I wasn't trying to force anything down anybody's throat or anything. I was told that this is not supposed to be a public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Noonan, did you wanna, go ahead.
Mayor McCoy, just with all due respect to the applicant, I just had to counter a couple of the points there, specifically because I was in meetings with the applicant and the applicant's counsel and walked through what this process was. So there was plenty of clarity on the part of the applicant of what this process looked like. In addition, most, both Ms. Noonan, myself, and Mr. Town asked on numerous occasions about the level of public outreach that was conducted. And I can give firsthand accounts to that. So assertions otherwise are not accurate.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Well, I, um, I think I'm still prepared to make a motion. It is very obvious that the applicant still needs to really speak to the residents. The way I see it, obviously, high density is not really working for this particular parcel. In looking at the neighborhood surrounding this, this lot, you're looking at very, at low density and medium density. Then you have residential right next to commercial, next to Albertsons, which in my opinion is really incompatible, having apartments and condos right next up to, to Albertsons. But I also wanted to mention that the commercial vacancy rate in the city of Thousand Oaks being in the double digits, anywhere between 12 and 15 percent, we really don't need more commercial. What we really do need is housing, but it needs to be compatible housing. So the direction that I would give you and the motion that I would make is that to direct you to come up with a plan that is medium density and to discuss that with the neighbors and then perhaps we can either continue to date uncertain or give you direction tonight to change this to medium density. Another thing I wanted to say is that medium density should still include housing for teachers, firefighters, deputies, nurses, because the salary they make is considered low income. So when I hear that, "Oh, I don't want my children to walk by low-income housing," they're walking by housing for deputies, teachers, substitute teachers, city employees and government employees. So I just want you to know that. And we have very low-income housing in the city of Thousand Oaks that will put to shame many other single-family homes in the city of Thousand Oaks because they're beautifully built. So I'd like to let you know that we have high standards when it comes to low-income housing. Thank you. So the motion is to direct, to come up with a plan that is medium density, reach out to the community and then come back when you're ready and continue to date uncertain.
We have a motion. And there are no speakers, so Madam, Councilmember, or Mayor Protem, Madam?
Well, yeah, I think we ought to discuss this motion. I mean, we've listened to the community members here for many hours and I think it, it's incumbent upon each one of us to talk a little bit about it.
Go ahead.
I completely agree with you about the low-income housing. That's workforce housing. We need workforce housing. We need, and I have heard it over and over again, we need housing for our teachers, for police officers, for city workers, you name it. So this business of some sort of a negative feeling about that is just not justified, but that's, that's more of an editorial comment. I don't wanna shut the door on this thing. I think that, listening to Mr. Cohen just now and, uh, some of the concerns that brought up the residents, I think they can be addressed. I think there's a potential to perhaps reduce density or maybe, as you said, Mr. Cohen, change it from apartments to condos. It just seems like there's areas we haven't really explored yet that could be, uh, explored without shutting the door completely on this project. I mean, before we had this pre, you know, whether you like this pre-screening or not, it was adopted so you, the residents, and we, the city council, could have input into a project before it went into the whole development process. So that's why we're here talking. That's a benefit. That's a plus to all of us. In the old days, this would have been in the community development department right now, and then it would have gone to the planning commission, then the city council. So at least now, we can discuss it before all that happens. But, um, yeah, I, I think there's room to make this thing work, but there are some concerns, obviously, that have to be addressed. And I brought them up, the private drive, the parking, the, uh, commercial versus residential, the density, which we've heard over and over again. So, uh, I wanna find a way to not shut the door, but continue to, you know, evolve with this project. And no, you're not shutting the door, Claudia, and I appreciate that. But it's not shutting the door where we grant the pre-screen so the door isn't shut, or are you suggesting that we do something completely different?
I'm suggesting that they continue to explore residential and, but medium density and then come back when they're ready.
All right. So in a sense, then, we're, we're not going to follow the pre-screen process based on your motion, then? We're gonna take a different direction?
I think it's exactly following the pre-screen process. They're looking for direction and we're giving them direction.
We've given them direction.
All right, okay. All right, I, I get you, but we're not gonna grant the units at this point based on your motion?
Right.
Okay. I got it. All right. Well, let's hear, I'd like to hear what my other colleagues have to say.
Certainly, we'll begin with Councilmember Angler.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree 100% with the comments on the low income. This, this is a misnomer. It's really workforce housing. We, we need housing for our people who work here in town, who have incomes less than average, but still good-sized incomes. I want that to happen for our, for our neighborhood. I want that to be part of what we plan into the future. Mr. Cohen, I am, I am a supporter of, of private rights for, for property. I, I think that, um, being able to develop that property is something that you have a right to. With that said, I think the comments from our, from our people in town, we haven't verified the petition of 480 people in that area, but that's a substantial number of people who may or may not be here. That is something that we can't ignore either. I'm not sure if I'm willing to go as far as, uh, Ms. Bill de la Peña in saying that we, you know, we only entertain a medium-density project, but I think the project has to be somewhat scaled for the neighborhood. I gotta be honest, looking at the apartment house, it looks a little monolithic to me as it was presented, but that's just looking at the elevations. I would like to see this project go forward as residential. I would like to see some aspect of it be able to be afforded by people who are workforce, have workforce housing needs. I think residential is the proper use for that property, but we have to scale this for the neighborhood. We have to scale it to, uh, include the neighbors in part of what they would like to see there.
Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I'd just like to say I agree with the motion and I agree with the sentiments that were expressed, both by Councilman Angler and Councilman Bill de la Peña. You know, when I came here many, many years ago, I was a schoolteacher with a large family and I could afford to buy a very nice house then. We've made the community so desirable by the way that it has been developed that the prices have gone, you know, way, way high. The first time I heard realtors, and I apologize to any realtors here, that they were bragging about how high the prices were getting here and they'd show pictures, that, that never appealed to me. You know, I'd like to see the firemen and the teacher and the policeman and everybody be able to afford to live here. They're, they're just regular people like you and I are. And, and so I like the idea of that. I was prepared to vote for the green light with the, with the stipulation that we would have to cut down this density in the process between the screening and the, and the final proposal. But it seems to me that Councilman Bill de la Peña's motion would achieve that. I know we can't ask the developer right now if he agrees with that, but, but I, I do think that that corner should be housing. And, you know, maybe I want the impossible by going to medium density and still having something that is affordable. I mean, I, I don't know what that would end up costing, but the, the current plan looks a little too dense to me, so I support the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Protem Adams?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I wonder if, it sounds like, well, we haven't heard from Mayor McCoy yet. Would you like to, before I comment, would you like to make a comment or?
I, I, I wanna see, the door's not closed, but I'm not approving the units from my position. I'm gonna support Councilmember Bill de la Peña's proposal. They, they're welcome to come back, but not at this density.
Okay. All right. Well, it sounds, it's interesting. It sounds like we're all in favor of a residential project there. It's just a question of neighborhood compatibility, density, et cetera.
There's work to be done.
Claudia, or Councilmember Bill de la Peña, pardon me, would, uh, by saying medium density, though, that restricts it to a certain number, would, would you, would it be more appropriate, do you think, to have it a little more open-ended, density that is compatible with the neighborhood or suitable with the neighborhood versus that particular category? You see what I'm getting at? I mean, again, like I said, I don't wanna shut the door on the project. I wanna give them a shot at this.
The door's not shut. We're just, we're, we're--
Well, when you say medium density, though, you are, you are designating, correct, medium density is a specific number of units, is it not?
It is a specific range of units, absolutely. The neighborhood, when you look at the map, is surrounded completely by low density, very low density and medium density. There is no high density in that neighborhood.
Well, I think we all agree that the high-density proposal troubles us. But I'm just thinking, what is the number of medium density? Could you tell me, please?
25 units.
Can remember again?
It was 25.
25. 25. So for that lot, it would be 25?
That's the maximum.
Maybe that'll work. I don't know, but I, like I said, I, I just wonder if we couldn't make that a little looser.
It's changed, I think.
From medium density to a density appropriate for the surrounding neighborhood, it just seems to me--
Medium is funny.
If you're saying 25 units, you may be virtually shutting the door on the project.
Not, no, not necessarily. You heard him tonight. That's not shutting the door on the project at all.
Well, it's from 47 down to 25.
That's not shutting the door on the project.
Hmm, I don't know. I, that I don't know. I don't know. But, like I said, I, uh, I wonder if, if we couldn't-- Can I add some-- We just give more room to be able to work on the number of units versus saying, "Okay, max 25, that's it."
I mean, right now, it's max 50.
Maybe it could be 27. Maybe it could be 28.
Yeah, with estate density bonus, it could be more than that, absolutely. But I would say medium density would be appropriate and compatible with the neighborhood.[1634.03][1634.03](APPLAUSE)
What do you think, Mayor?
There's work to be done by the property owner with the community. They're welcome to come back and present to us. The property owner has stated that he'd be willing to reduce it to condominiums or townhouses, excuse me.
That was interesting.
And, and that he's, he's willing to fall within the range of medium density. So with his statement, I'm, I'm in favor of Councilmember Bill de la Peña's motion.
So you'd be willing to collar it at 25?
I am, yes.
All right. Okay. Well, that's why we're, that's why we're discussing things.
Councilmember Angler.
Angler, Councilmember Angler, what do you think?
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
You're on the spot.
No, I, I, I think we've made it very, very clear that the density level at which was presented tonight is not going to fly.
Yes.
Without a doubt, both on terms of what the, our public input has been and input coming from the DIAS, that will not fly at that level. I think I would agree a little bit with you, Councilman, Councilmember Adams, that I would like to see what they would come back with without a, a, a hard, fast number. But at a higher density that has been proposed, it just will not go.
Can I--
Councilmember Jones is next.
Thank you. I was gonna ask.
If, if medium density is 25 units per acre, Mr. Town? I always thought medium density was 15 and high was 30, but if medium density is 20-- well, let me finish. Okay? If medium density is 25 units per acre with 1.7 acres, you could build 42 and 1/2 houses.
No, no--
Which is 1.7 acres, right?
Right, but times 15 units is the maximum for medium density. That's how I'd arrive.
That's what I said. You said it was 25.
It's 1.7 acres times 15 maximum--
So it's 15 units per acre is medium.
Medium density is 4.6 to 15 units per net acre.
Yeah, and, and high is 30 units, right?
For high density, it's 15 to 30. So I derived that number, but 1.7 acres times 15.
Yeah, well, I multiplied it by 25. I thought you said it was 25, so that would give 42 and 1/2.
That's the maximum yield based on the area and medium density. That's the maximum yield based on the area and medium density. That doesn't consider density bonus because we're talking about market rate for sale units, so that's just based on our general plan.
So if this whole lot were medium density, you would get 15 times 1.7 acres, is that it?
Correct.
Okay.
That does not include density bonus because we're talking about for-sale units. Typically, we include, density bonus applies to affordable units typically in apartments. So that's based on our general plan land use categories.
So that would give 25 and 1/2 units?
Correct.
Thank you.
There doesn't appear to be any more questions or comments, so--
A quick question. I'm sorry, Mayor. So you're saying with medium density, they could apply for density bonus?
Well, density bonus is a function of the number of affordable units and the income category.
Could be upwards of 32.
Typically, what we're seeing is that with condominium-type projects, we don't see many, if any, affordable units. They typically apply to apartment projects.
Council with a question.
All right, so that's it for speakers. We have a motion. Madam Clerk, will you prepare the vote?
Just before that, if I may--
You may.
So we are, just to be clear, we're basically collaring this project at 25 units.
We're voting on it. It may not pass.
No, I understand, but that's the motion.
That's the motion.
Yeah, the motion is to direct a medium-density bonus. They can work with the residents and see what units they want to put in, whether condos or apartments. There's always the option of state density bonus, but I think that high density simply will not work on this particular zoning because it is completely surrounded by low-density and medium-density housing.
Well, yeah, I think we all agree with you.
Okay.
I think we all agree with you. I just, as Councilmember Angler stated, I'm just a little reluctant to collar it at 25. What if it works at 28? Would that be all that terrible?
They could go up to 32 if they're willing to do affordable housing.
Yeah.
Well, that's true. Well, my sense is that the medium-density motion looks rather strong right now.
I think it is very compatible with the neighborhood.
Well, I'm talking about, between the five of us.
Given that commercial, we have to, our vacancy rate in commercial real estate is simply too high. It's in the double digits, and will continue to increase.
We're going to vote on this motion.
All right, go ahead.
We're going to have another motion to go beyond 11 o'clock because we're getting in almost tomorrow. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare the vote?
The motion passes 4-1 with Councilmember Angler voting no.
All right. Now we need a motion to continue past 11 o'clock.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, will you prepare the vote?
Councilmember Angler, please state your vote.
Councilmember Angler, we have a vote.
The motion passes 5-0.
Do we want to break, or we want to keep pushing through? All right, let's go. 9B Transit Operation Agreement and Program Modifications. Let's go. Folks, we have more business to attend to, so if you exit, could you do it quietly? I appreciate it. Folks, excuse me, we have more business to attend to, so if you could exit quietly, we appreciate it. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Due to the late hour, this is going to be a highly expedited presentation. Council is being asked to consider two items tonight. One is the award of contract for transit services. The other is a comprehensive package of revenue enhancements, cost-cutting to address an ongoing fare box shortfall issue. As this slide shows, our budget for this year for services is approximately $6 million, and we are seeing a continuing increase in service costs, including costs with our new contract, which is resulting in an ongoing fare box shortfall issue. The first item is to award the contract, and the contract costs are shown on this slide. The year-one contract for the lowest proposal was $5.9 million, which is approximately $1 million more than what we are currently paying for our current services. Staff is proposing a number of revenue enhancements to address our ongoing fare box shortfall, the first one being a proposed increase to our base bus fares and our local dial-a-ride fares to generate additional income. We are also proposing a number of changes to our service hours based on existing ridership. As this particular chart shows, our first hour and last hour of service for both our bus and our dial-a-ride service is considerably less in terms of demand than it is during our peak hours, sometimes by a factor of 10. So we are proposing some trimming of service hours without trimming any of the existing services in the community. These proposed service cuts should generate approximately $350,000 worth of overall operations savings while creating an additional $70,000 reduction in our approximately $450,000 fare box shortfall. Additionally, your staff report outlines a number of steps that staff would recommend be taken in order to address ongoing revenue issues. If council considers all of the recommendation the staff has proposed, we should be able to trim approximately $270,000 of the budgeted fare box shortfall for the upcoming fiscal year, which we expect to continue for some time based upon operational costs and ongoing ridership. And with that, staff is available for questions. Also, representatives of the contractor are also available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Council questions? Council, Mayor Pro Tem Adam?
Yeah, thank you for the report. Obviously, I'd rather not subsidize the bus system with the general fund, if at all possible. And based on the staff report, we're looking at some shortfalls. In 19 and 20, it looked like as much as $450,000.
That's correct, sir.
All right. So I know we're suggesting a fare increase, which we haven't done since 2012, and it's a nominal fare increase, which would raise, I think, $116,000. We're talking about changing service hours to cut back a little bit on the times when they aren't being utilized as much, and that's going to save us some money. And changing a few policy items. So what I'm getting at is, we do all this, are we going to close the shortfall and not have to use the general fund?
So currently, that shortfall is actually being covered by a congestion mitigation air quality fund, so it's not the general fund.
But that's going to run out, right?
Eventually, it will run out. So this helps us get 3/4 of the way there. We're going to continue to look for opportunities to generate revenue and reduce expenses to get back in the black, I would say.
I don't think we're any different than any other city. Ridership seems to be stagnant at best.
Yep.
But costs keep rising. So we've got to find a way to, I mean, our general fund has enough pressure on it now, and I'd rather see, you know, some targeted increases in fares and cuts in hours to make the thing run. Because, you know, let's face it, if this was a private enterprise, it wouldn't be operating under these circumstances.
Sell some advertising. Get some advertising sold.
Oh, that's true, right. Advertising on the buses. Good point, yeah. Well, that might help, too. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Bildi La Peña?
Thank you. I was just thinking, if we were to eliminate a fixed route, would that save us money?
Ultimately, no, because the cost per passenger on dial-a-ride is more than twice the cost per passenger on the bus service. Whether you have one person or 40 people on a bus, it costs exactly the same amount per hour to operate, whereas dial-a-ride is basically based upon each ride provided.
So eliminating the least busy route, fixed route, or maybe even the two least busy routes would not make a difference?
Certainly, elimination of a route would be a significant cost savings, and what staff is proposing is really the equivalent of eliminating close to an entire route. A route costs about half a million dollars a year to operate. However, keep in mind, we have some of the highest-length timed routes of any community in the county right now, given our large physical geographical area that we're trying to cover. So it would be really impactful. People that are currently waiting anywhere from 55 to 75 minutes for a bus would be then at, say, three routes, be waiting anywhere from, say, 90 to 100 minutes per bus.
Might always be, it might almost be cheaper to just hand out vouchers for Lyft or Uber.
Staff is constantly exploring options like that. One of the big strengths for us, without having a local self-help tax for transit, our funding that we get from the state and federal government has a lot of restrictions attached to it that limit our flexibility for certain innovations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Angler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question. Many of our residents who utilize our bus services, both the dial-a-ride and the regular bus services, are, our kids going to school, and then our most disadvantaged people who either do not have a vehicle or who are, or need the bus because they can't drive. Are we making sure that we're taking care of those people with our new schedule? I know that it's very low on the side hours, but I want to make sure that we take care of the people who need the bus.
Certainly, the hours proposed should have a minimal impact to both seniors and schoolchildren, and the fare proposal that staff has presented, in fact, actually lowers the fare for seniors and disabled riders on the bus service.
Thank you.
You're most welcome. It doesn't appear there are any more council questions. We have one public speaker, Jim Schultzman.
Good evening. Thank you.
I wanted to appear before you tonight to thank you for the partnership that we've been together for the past many years. I also look forward to the future as your transit partner, and then we value the contract dearly. We appreciate the confidence in your vote. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Madam Clerk, will you prepare the vote, please?
The motion passes 5-0.
Agenda item 12, Council issues recommendations, follow-up reports. We have an updated League of California Cities, Channel Counties Division meeting on May 17, and that will be by Councilmember Angler. Let's bring it home.
I'll make this as quick as I can, Mayor.
Amen.
Thank you. We did go up to Paso Robles over the last Friday for the League of Cities meeting. It's interesting to attend these meetings in that we find that the issues that we wrestle with here in Thousand Oaks are generally felt across the entire state. Up in, the League of Cities was happy to report that SB 50 has been tabled for a year and that the, but the Governor Newsom is still looking at tying SB 1 money to housing. That's the extent of my report, and I appreciate the council sending me up there to learn a little bit more.
Thank you, Councilmember. Do you have any follow-up items, Ms. Powers?
Just very briefly, our next regularly scheduled council meeting will be three weeks from tonight, the 11th of June. Currently have a public hearing on our operating and CIP budgets, our annual attachment of delinquent wastewater liens to property tax rules, and leveling of assessments. We have a couple of department reports that are still coming together regarding some contract planning assistance related to fire recovery and CEEF grant award allocations. Again, that's on three weeks from tonight, the 11th of June.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. And before Ms. Noonan speaks of the closed session, I do want to note that Becca Wittenall from the Acorn is still here. Well done. Outstanding. Ms. Noonan, would you like to announce the closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. We have two closed sessions tonight. Both of them are conference with legal counsel on existing litigation. First one is City of Thousand Oaks versus Valencia Circle K Riding Stables pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A. And the second one is Valencia Circle K Riding Staples versus City of Thousand Oaks pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A. It is unlikely I'll have anything to report.
Thank you, Ms. Noonan. Before we conclude tonight, I just want to tell anyone who's still awake or listening, on June 6 will be the 75th anniversary of D-Day, and we've got some survivors of the invasion of Normandy, D-Day, and we'll be covering that in the coming days. So thank you, everyone. Long night, and we'll see you next meeting. We now close this session.